I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, and council members Burgoyne, Gierbaugh, Peters, Rhodes, Roth, and Tahar. Staff present, we have City Manager Campbell, Clerk Hill, City Attorney Smith, Deputy Clerk Rutledge, City Treasurer Bennett, Water Production and Pollution Control Superintendent Skoll, and Parks Director Carla Scruggs as well. Okay? As always, for those of you in the audience, if you'd please sign up or sign in in the back, we greatly appreciate that. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I have several amendments. The first of which is just sort of a housekeeping thing. In new business, or excuse me, in public hearings, item 13-67, the name associated with that motion should be Treasurer Bennett, not City Manager Campbell. On new business, item 13-70, removal of emergency phone at Mill Pond Park, the second motion is going to be changed. And the new wording will be to approve and authorize, or not authorize, the removal of emergency phone at Mill Pond Park immediately, with the rest of that verbiage beginning with "with" and ending with the year 2013 removed. And then finally, there are three things to be added during the discussion period of our agenda this evening. First is, under the second bullet point, reports and other announcements. Those of us who attended the Michigan Municipal Capital Conference will speak briefly about what we learned. And then we'll be having a presentation from our city attorney about LFA two. And then Mr. Burgoyne has requested discussion about a further budget work session. So that will be added as the final bullet point under discussion items. So if there are no other amendments, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved?
Moved by Mr. Gierbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. So first up this evening, we have four presentations. The first is somewhat bittersweet, and that's acknowledgement of our, the retirement of our city clerk, Ms. Hill. So Ms. Hill, if you'd join me up front?
If I must.
You must. And ladies, if you'd like to join me up front, we have our...
Yeah, I'll just be... So, we have two other electeds who are here to present, but I'm gonna begin. So, most of you know it... So, there's a lot of family, a lot of friends here this evening of her, Hill. Many of you are aware of the fact that she has served at the station for just shy of 40 years. And I'm not sure how familiar most of you are with the clerk's office and that position, but the city and citizens benefit greatly from a clerk that performs in an exceptional, extraordinary way. The clerk is a repository for all minutes, all documents. The clerk manages elections, coordinates passports, helps to staff all of the boards and commissions. So, that position is very integral in the city government. And Clerk Hill is truly exceptional. She's going to be greatly missed. And I want to read a portion of this special letter of recognition that Deputy Clerk Rutledge helped her during the process, signed by all members of the council. And I'm not gonna read this in its entirety, but I do want to read just a few sections. So, whereas through her desire to provide the best possible service to the Celine community, Diane has made City Hall a passport acceptance agency, has implemented a cemetery software program, and has provided her staff with opportunities for advanced training. And whereas Diane S. Hill was recognized by Michigan Association of Admissible Clerks as the 2012 Clerk of the Year, and whereas the city of Celine has benefited greatly due to Diane's performance of her duties and responsibilities as clerk of the Celine community, and as she has earned, excuse me, the respect and admiration with whom, with those with whom she's come in contact with, especially fellow city employees and city council members. And whereas Diane S. Hill has taken a leap of faith and has decided it's time for a change after a long and distinguished career in municipal government, and therefore will retire from Celine, from F, will retire, excuse me, as Celine City Clerk effective May 17, 2013. Now therefore, I, Brian D. Marl, the mayor of the city of Celine, on behalf of the Celine City Council and citizens of Celine, do hereby thank Diane S. Hill for her dedicated service to the Celine community and commend Diane for her outstanding commitment during her tenure as city clerk, with sincerest best wishes for a long and enjoyable retirement. Again, this document is signed out myself, Mayor Marl, Mayor Clerk Tamara Tahar, council members Peters, Rhodes, Roth, Dear Roth, and Burgoyne. We wish you the very best. We thank you so much for your service. Give her a round of applause. So, we have a few gifts for you here. This floral arrangement is a gift from the city council to you. And more importantly, and more significant, here is a very lovely timepiece, which I believe you selected. After that, just the smallest moment in token of our appreciation. The least we could do. I do want to acknowledge, I mentioned your family. I know your husband Jim is in the audience. You know, the first position that Diane can tell you is not your standard 95 type job. It requires long hours. Diane comes in on the weekends. She works late in the evenings. She has to staff city council. And Lord knows, we can be a little bombastic, and sometimes the meetings do not conclude at a reasonable hour. So that's just, that's indicative of her type of commitment and the type of emphasis that she puts on her job. And so, I want to give a shout out to her husband and to all of her extended family because having a wife, a mother, a friend, an aunt, a cousin who serves the city clerk, I'm gonna be a bit of a burden because of the schedule. So we greatly appreciate you sharing her with us. I have one more thing until I turn over to our state rep and to our county commissioner. Diane is moving on to a new position as Office Manager at Linden Square. And I believe you, after the facility administration year, you're their first type, right? So they knocked that one right out of the park. And I am, we could have chosen somebody more accomplished, more talented, and more dedicated to her work. So, again, we wish you the best. Congratulations.
Okay, so, yeah, so, we go back a few years. Alicia and I used to go back a few years with Diane, like, 20, no, 14, right? How many years? 15, right? To actually, yeah, a long time. So it's actually a really cool honor to be here in another capacity and recognize the amount of work that you've done because both Alicia and I have really, and I know all the city and citizens have directly experienced Diane's professionalism, the amazing worker, employee leader in the city, not only in City Hall, but I think in the city and the whole. She's really done a lot. And you've been really, really, really fortunate to have the leadership. And I know that Alicia's gonna say it in words also, but it was really, again, I think Mayor Marl said it very well, that it's very bittersweet to lose her capacity here. And you know, Amy's gonna have big shoes to fill in the interim, and it'll be quite challenging because she does a lot, Diane does a lot in her, like, quiet way. And for me, when I was at City Hall, she was always a person that early on to keep me seen in a lot of ways and watching my back when I was trying to make mistakes. And I always had her check on me. She would do a lot of these tributes, so I'm really nervous about showing her the tribute.
Yeah, who wrote this one?
Somebody new staff wrote it, and to be perfectly honest, it's been for a decade and a half. And I, she sent it over to the governor without my looking at it. And it takes a while to get things back to the current governor. And so, just like, we don't have it signed for the governor. We will have it signed for the governor by Thursday, but I had some changes that I wanted to make to it. So therefore, I have it to the actual tribute. And it will be signed by Governor Schneider, Lieutenant Governor Hawley, and our senator, so Senator Richard Bill. So, I just want to say how much we really, really appreciate it. You know, one thing said, Diane did, and again, in a very quiet way because Diane is not one to talk about how, what's the word, the work that she does, but she was recognized in the county and also at the state level. But in the county, for a lot of things, she caught a lot of mistakes before anybody else did in this county. And that was, that's really important to how we do run elections. She was one of the leaders in new equipment and across the board. So I support her ways to improve things. So I think we're really lucky to have you moving to another new community here, our new retirement community, because that is gonna be another really important part of our community than having somebody with your expertise and your real experience. So, we do have a tribute. I don't know if I'm gonna read it. It sort of talks about, a little bit, you might want to take this a little too personal, but it talks about where she started, and so that would put her age, you know, talk about that. So, but just wanting to tell you how much we really appreciate it.
Well, I have a resignation that was passed by the Board of Commissioners last Wednesday, recognizing your service. But I'm not gonna read it, but I just want to say thank you. Do you probably know, how many city council members slash mayors have you trained?
Mayor said you've trained 78. Was that what the city managers, 77 council members?
77.
75 or 77.
Wow.
So I was lucky enough to be one of those in that group, and I'm very grateful for that. But, you know, I think more than anything, you and Mayor Marl touched on some of that, is innovative programs that you brought, and really focusing on citizens of Celine, such as late hours or open Saturdays, really trying to be very forward-thinking on serving the citizens. And so, we are, I think, as a city, going to be at a great loss. And even at the county level, I know that you've trained other clerks in township, cities, villages, and been at the county level. So, I think that somebody's gonna have big shoes to fill. I'm not quite sure who that person is, but we're looking forward to having you still active in that community. And thank you very much.
I just want to thank the Celine community. It's been a great career. Always wonderful to work in your own community. And thanks to all the council members, past and present the mayors, members with them.
Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is the organ donation awareness presentation by Randy Bennett. Randy?
Is this thing working? It is. Okay. Okay, so, I'm Randy Bennett, and these are my classmates, Joshua Urmann and Caitlin Ellis. We're seniors at Celine High, and we're a member of the Senior Capstone class, which was a class that started last year. So it's kind of new to the public and new to the high school in general. What we had to do was, we had to create a service day project because there's an event that takes place across the country called Global Youth Service Day. And so, in order to kind of sum up what Senior Capstone is all about, we had to create a service project. So, the three of us and two other of our classmates who weren't able to join us tonight decided to do a project on organ donation because it was something that we both had, well, two of us had personal stories with, and it was also something that we felt we could make a big awareness about and kind of make a difference in a simple way. Sorry. So, this is similar to the presentation we gave to the students of Celine High School. And we basically just gave some facts about organ donation. We wanted to make sure that everyone knew that anyone, regardless of age or medical history, is allowed to sign up for organ donation. And this is largely because a lot of people are under the impression that if something's wrong with them medically, or if they have not gotten their driver's license, they're not allowed to be an organ donor, which is an inaccurate fact. We also wanted to make sure that kids at the high school level, because it was kind of an important issue, since most of them are under 18, knew that if you're under 18, you're allowed to give, become a donor without parent consent. What happens is, if something were to happen to you, they would be the last to have a say in it. We made sure we gave some statistics, like each organ donor can save up to eight lives, and about 3,000 people are waiting for a life-saving organ in Michigan today. And that's just in Michigan. When you look at that number nationwide, it gets amplified to around 114,000, which, pretty large scale. So, this next slide is some more stats that we gave. It's in your packet, your presentation packet, but it's kind of just a basic stats about organ donation and why encourage people to do it. Caitlin, if you want to take this slide?
Okay, so these are just some of the quotes that we pulled off of Gift of Life Michigan to show the students kind of how big of an impact it can make on someone's life. A personal story, my grandpa had a heart transplant 16 years before I was born. Without it, I would have never spent 13 years of my life with him. And I'm extremely grateful that someone decided to do this. Kind of unfortunate circumstances, but it gave me and my family 13 more years with him. So, that just kind of hits home and kind of had motivation for me to do this project with my classmates. Just kind of what we did at the high school. Two of us went out and through classrooms, and throughout our sixth-period day, we gave 21 presentations. That's about, I mean, we had like about seven hour, six or seven an hour. And then we also had a section of our library signed out, where teachers could bring their kids out if they wanted to sign up and become a donor. So, we actually had 209 people throughout our high school become donors throughout the day, which, we didn't really have a set number that we wanted to kind of get signed up, but that was a great accomplishment for us, and we were happy with what we did. So, of the 209 students, it's about eight lives per donor. So, we kind of did the math, and just at Celine High School alone, we would save up to 6,000, or 1,06,000 lives. So, or 1,000, sorry, 600 lives, just from that. And then we also, 200, or 325 students were already donors at Celine High School, and that was about 50%. So, that was kind of some big stats that we found were interesting and worth sharing to you guys.
Okay, so, while our goals for presenting to you guys was to let you know about organ donation, the bigger picture in mind was to encourage service learning. Senior Capstone is a very new class. It's a new idea to a lot of people, and service learning in general is a very new idea to a lot of people. Some people kind of think that, you know, maybe it's not worth their time, or allotting, allotting time for students to perform community work, I mean, isn't bettering their education. But we're here to kind of encourage the fact that it does. So, we mostly want to talk about the importance of service, and so a lot of you guys already know about organ donation, and we're not ignorant to that. So, we're kind of under the impression that a better world starts with the youth. And that means that we need to start service off young. And so, by doing that, we need to encourage, our personal standpoint is that we need to encourage families and students and teachers around Celine to start getting involved in service work at a young age. Because you don't really see the kind of difference you're capable of making until you go out there and start making it. As I said, we're part of Celine Senior Capstone, and it is a very new class, and it is a very limbo class, I could say. Last year, they had around 60 students. This year, we had around 20. So, just a difference in two years is kind of insane when it comes to the amount people were involved. So, in Celine Senior Capstone, not only have we all done our individual service, but there's also been two Haiti trips in which we traveled with Port Out to install water filters to people who were underprivileged and having dirty water and getting sick from it. And then, we also, like we talked about, we're doing our Global Youth Service Day. Every single group, we had multiple different groups, I think we had around six, in the class, we're doing a different service project. And it's not just about performing the service, it's about learning about contemporary issues in the world that we can make a difference in. So, whereas a lot of kids are learning about history and math, and we are too, at the same time, we're also learning about contemporary things that are going on that we're able to make a difference in. These are a couple pictures that I kind of hit close to home now that I've been to Haiti. I was with the second group that traveled to Haiti this year, and this actual bottom picture on the bottom right is one of my favorite pictures, and the top picture in the top left. Those smiles you see everywhere when you're in Haiti. And while going to Haiti and traveling to Haiti, I feel, I mean, it was an absolutely amazing experience that I'm glad I had. This isn't what you have to do to make a difference in someone's life, but this is where we're capable of going. Just helping out at a school like Caitlin does, or, you know, helping out at a, an animal's shelter, anything like that. You make a difference in someone's life along the way. And so, I end with the quote, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others." And, I mean, the best thing that I would like, the biggest thing I'd like everyone to get out of this, and that includes city council and the members here present in the audience, I think the biggest thing we can do is to keep an eye, open mind to service learning. I know, kind of, the older generations you get, it's not, it's a newer thing, it's a newer concept. But I think the best thing we can do is as parents and as city members and as a community looking to better our entire community, the best thing we can do is encourage city, encourage service learning to the younger ages and try and start service learning off young. So, that would be the bulk of our presentation. So, thank you.
Mr. Burgoyne, you have a question?
What did you do in Haiti? Did you perform a service, or did you learn, or what did you do in Haiti?
When we went to Haiti, we installed over 34 water filters within a week's time. We also stayed at an orphanage the first night, in which we basically, it kind of sounds a little corny, but like we tried to do with the rest of the trip, is just show love to these kids and show that, you know, they matter to us, which is a big thing. So, on top of doing a very physical and tangible task, such as installing water filters, we also did kind of a more emotional task with just showing these kids that they matter and showing these families that they matter to us and that they're not just forgotten about. So, we kind of had a double-sided service project in Haiti, so.
Where did the money come from for your trip?
The money?
And the filters?
The money actually for the trip came from, like, ourselves. We fundraised, I fundraised for, I think around two months beforehand. And the water for the filters, that comes from Port Out themselves. They provide the filters. We go and we stay with Port Out at their compound with two of their leaders. And so, the money for the filters is provided from them, whereas the money for our trip is provided for us.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Rhodes?
I had a question, but a comment, and that is that I'm really pleased to hear that young people are getting involved in service activities. I'm a strong advocate of being a servant leader and of having a real-world experience, and you all represent that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's great.
No additional comments? Thank you very much for your very thorough, enlightening presentation, and hope that your passion will serve as an inspiration to others. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a presentation from our Celine Chamber of Commerce Executive Director Art Trapp about the Tree Lighting Kickoff Campaign. Mr. Trapp?
Thank you and good evening, everyone. I would like to take this opportunity to make a small presentation as the kickoff for our tree lighting campaign, which kicks off tonight, and hopefully by the end of September, it'll be over and we'll be back in business again. I want to say right from the beginning that this is a chamber project by the Board of Directors from the chamber and many of our chamber members who are putting this on. This is not a city project, but I wanted to make sure that, because we're using city trees, that you all were aware of what we're trying to do. So... All right, Chris?
Well, you can go to review and you show.
Okay. Thank you. Of course, the first slide was our logo, and that came compliments of Mr. Mangold, who has done a number of our logos for different projects and different things. This is Trees Prior to 2008 campaign that we did, when we put the lights in the trees. And when I say put the lights in the trees, we had lights in the trees before that. They were laid in there by Santor and Mr. Osterling's 22-foot bamboo pole that resides in the chamber. If a truck went by, a lot of times, the light strands would fall, and Larry'd have to be out there again putting them back into the trees. But anyways, that's how we got started. Our objective is to remove all the old lights from the trees, and that's done. There are a few small trees in various areas that do not have the lights that have, that have been removed yet, and we probably won't do that, mostly because those trees do not need pruning. The trees that we removed the lights from do need pruning, and hopefully we'll have that done here sometime over the summer. Our next objective is to raise sufficient capital to replace the LED lights by the end of October. We try to have lights in the trees and have them lit for the 1st of November, so that when we have some of our Christmas sales downtown, that it looks a little bit more festive. And our goal is to install 50,000 new lights in the trees. Bring in the professionals. Yeah, Holiday Lighting Service has done the lights for us since 2008. Every year, they have come back and serviced the lights. Things like weather, trucks driving by, just general wear and tear. And then the trees do grow, and they kind of pull and expand the wiring between the lights. The lights are all good, but it's the wiring in between that deteriorates. And so, these are our friends who are removing the lights the other day. The lights are out. And this is what the Tree Lighting Campaign looked like 2008, when we put lights in the trees. I think it's pretty awesome to see that those lights do make a difference, especially during the winter, when we have a dark between the late hours. 1,000 brown wire strands, each light, each with 50 lights, and so there's our 50,000 lights. LEDs are light emitting diodes, and they remain lit from November 1st through March 15th, about 130 days. What I want to say about this is that ordinarily, when we buy lights from a retailer, they guarantee the lights for 90 days, irregardless of how long you use them or not. The company that we're using from Manchester has guaranteed our lights for two years. If anything goes bad, they'll come back and replace them free of charge. And electric, the electrical expense is about 77% less than conventional mini incandescent lights, and that's why we've gone to LEDs. The brown wiring, it blends in with the bark, and so, most of it should be pretty invisible throughout most of the year. This is what it looks like looking down Michigan Avenue with the lights from the 2008 campaign. And everybody knows that I have a thing for the parade, so I had to put a parade picture in. So, breaking down our investment to remove the lights was $6,600, and as I said, the lights have been removed. The bill was paid today. We purchased 1,000 strands of lights through Ace Hardware. I got them for about 60% of what they would cost ordinarily. And I want to thank Mr. Junga for his kind help and assistance in procuring the lights. One of the things that we did is that we went right to the factory in China. The lights are usually bound together and coiled, inbox, tagged, et cetera. And when they're coiled like that, they spring back when you pull them apart. So, we had them loosely wrapped in plastic bags with no tags. So we had them loosely wrapped in plastic bags with no tags, so all those things make it easier for the installation folks to put them back into the trees. Stringing the lights in the trees, just to have a rough estimate of between thirty and forty thousand, and the overall project is expected to be about fifty-five thousand. Again, this is what it looks like when we have the lights in the trees as they're well-done. Okay, Celine Area, the sponsorship, uh, we're putting up a ten thousand dollars as a match for any and all interested parties. We get somebody put up ten thousand, the Chamber's going to put in ten thousand. Individual can sponsor a single tree or a multiple tree, and we will have plaques that designate the tree if that is the desire of the person making the donation. Businesses and foundations, we're going to try to tap into that more than we ever have in the past, and hopefully that will be successful. It was successful in 2008, and I would like to see that repeated. This is a copy or a picture of the plaques, um, we will use if the person that's making the donation desires to have their same plaque, or we will have new plaques designating, uh, this year's campaign. Again, this is what the trees look like with the lights fully in them. How can you help? Sponsor a tree, first come, first served. We have seventy-eight trees that had lights in them. We're going to expand that to eighty-seven trees, we're going to light a few trees that we haven't been able to light before, at least that's our goal, and would like to make all that work. You can refer a donor to the Chamber, advise friends and relatives on social media about the campaign, and I hope everyone will take a shot at doing that. Volunteer to assist the Tree Lighting Committee. Winter in Downtown Celine. Chamber information, our phone number, our website, our Facebook page, our Twitter page, and our address. And this is what Celine looks like on an early Thanksgiving morning about six o'clock with all the lights on. I have brochures, if anybody'd like to have one or see what trees are available. Right now, I have a thousand dollars that have been donated, and I also have two trees that are spoken for, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. This is a, this is a very important initiative. One quick question, can someone sign up to sponsor a tree online, or does that have to be done in the Chamber office?
No, you can sign up online.
Okay.
My preference is that if you're interested in doing a tree, call Mary Alice at the Chamber, so that we don't have someone requesting a tree that we know has already been taken.
Okay.
It's a first come, first served, so we will be contacting all the folks that donated last time, and then we have a list of whatever-
Okay.
For the new ones.
I hope you leave some of those flyers with us, so we can put them out on the counter at the front desk.
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Trapp?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay, last, but certainly not least, on our, uh, presentation schedule this evening is a Washtenaw County update from our County Commissioner, Alicia Ping, and I think she'll also be discussing the, um, RTA, well, now statute that was adopted by the Legislature late last year. So, Ms. Ping?
Good evening, um, thank you for having me, Mayor and Council. Um, a couple things that, that I can talk about. First is the RTA, which, um, I don't have a lot of good news. I know that you passed a resolution, you know, opposing the RTA, um, so the best that I can give to you now is who to contact if you have questions, where things are at. The good news is, is that one of our representatives here from Washtenaw County, Liz Gerber, was elected Vice Chair of, um, the RTA, which is, includes Washtenaw, Oakland, Macomb, and Wayne Counties. So that's, that is good news, so we do have somebody in a leadership position representing our interests here. There has been legislation introduced, um, I just talked with our state representative, and she doesn't think it's going to go anywhere fast, only because it was introduced, um, and there's a lot of opposition, just, just the nuances of, of some of the language in the, in the bill, so, and that would, that was an opt-out, um, piece of legislation that was introduced, um, but like I said, I don't think that it's going anywhere fast. So, that's pretty much it with RTA. Any, any questions about the RTA? I know, um-
Mr. Rhodes?
I was just going to suggest for the audience, you might say what RTA stands for.
Oh, okay, um, actually, I have, um, this great little piece of paper that I had, um, Sarah Prespich at the AATA put together, which I'm happy to forward along, and I can give this to you now, um, but really, the RTA is, um, I'll just, it's a quick paragraph. Uh, the Michigan Legislature created a new regional, Regional Transit Authority, RTA, in southeastern Michigan in late 2012 through Public Act 387. After dozens of, of attempts for over forty years, it finally passed. And by law, the RTA includes, uh, Washtenaw County as well as Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb, and the RTA has been charged with developing rolling rapid transit to the four counties and coordinate regional services. Local efforts to expand transit service are continuing, you know, outside of that, so, that's, that's, that is what the RTA is.
Any additional questions about the, uh, RTA? Excuse me. Okay, let me continue.
Um, just on another note, the county is currently working on, um, a four-year budget, which is different than our, our planning for a two-year budget, um, which is different than City Council, which is an annual budget, so, um, it has to be reaffirmed every year, but it is a, a planning tool to help us kind of figure out where we can make structural changes, um, as well as eliminate debt, and you may or may not have heard at this point that the county is looking to bond for up to three hundred and fifty million dollars to fund our unfunded liability for the county health retirement plan and its pension plan. So that's in the works. The, uh, we will be passing a, um, a, a letter of intent to do this at our, our next board meeting, um, but we are trying to make the process as transparent as possible, and I think in the next week or so, we'll be having, um, a press conference open to all the press with, I will be there along with Chair Youssef Rabi and the Ways and Means Chair, um, as well, Felicia Brabek from Pittsfield Township, as well as several county staff members. We will also have several public hearings, public input, um, we, you know, want to make sure that the public is involved as possible. Um, we've been advised against bringing it to a vote of the people, um, because then it would be a, um, oh, sorry, it's, um, if it goes to a vote of the people, the people guarantee that we'll be able to pay the bonds. So, um, if that happens, a, maybe a less fiscally responsible board could spend up to the budget and then, in any given year, assess the taxpayers of the county, the, the, a millage equal to paying that bond payment, so, um, which could be, you know, this year it's thirty million dollars, so, um, it could be excessive. So, um, by, by leaving it with a vote of the board, we have to stay within our budget in any given year to make that bond payment through the general fund. So that was a lot of information. Questions about that?
Any questions for Commissioner Ping? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Is there any chance that you may be looking at potentially allowing or helping out the low, the smaller communities like the city of Celine or whatever in terms of this bonding? Because we've talked about this once we closed our plans, and this whole thing was at the state level, I know at one point, to do this, if potentially using the county as a potential, um, being a backing for us?
A resource. Um, I know that we'll have plenty of bonding ability available, um, that as far as, um, using the county as a backer, I'm unsure of at this point. I don't know what the legislation is. This is new legislation, which is why we're able to do this, and we'll be one of the first people applying to the State Treasurer's Office for approval for these bonds. We will be going to Chicago, um, May, or, excuse me, June 12th and 13th to meet with the bond rating agencies, Moody's and Standard and Poor's, hopefully to reaffirm our bond rating as double A, so, um, which you'd have to have double A or better bond rating in order to be able to write the bonds, sell the bonds.
Can I answer something about that?
Representative Driscoll?
There is, there was a bill that was introduced by one of my fellow Democrats to expand the capacity for the bonding for beyond the, I think right now it's a double A plus, I think is the limit, there's like thirty communities throughout the state that can, for that bonding capacity, and there was a bill, um, it was introduced, I don't know if it will go anywhere, though, so I can keep you apprised as that goes on. I was actually interested in trying to do something, and she's been there longer, so, but I don't know if it's going to go anywhere, so.
I was just thinking it might be beneficial for us as a regional, knowing that the county can have, has a better rating than most smaller communities, that we could part, you know, tail on the back end of it somehow, potentially helping us solve our problems too, so.
I will find out and let you know.
Thanks.
Additional questions for Ms., or Commissioner Ping? No? Well, we greatly appreciate your service and your accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you, feel free to call anytime.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, uh, on the agenda this evening, we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and may comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there any citizen comments?
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Larry Osterling, I think you heard my name referenced in, reference to some kind of hole in the lights, and I sure, what I heard it was alluding to, other than I spent a lot of cold mornings putting the lights up in the downtown, and I just wanted to add one really quick comment. The first is, I'd hope it's apparent that this is being funded entirely by the private sector, which is, um, the Chamber and its board, I believe, is to be complimented for taking up the banner and funding this in that way. The other is, as you might tell of my experience with the Chamber, I have a fair amount of experience with this project. It was sort of an experiment at first, people like it, and matter of fact, people in other towns like it. I can remember getting calls from places like Tecumseh and Clinton and Chelsea, y'all wanted to know how we did it, and it all boils down to money, and so what a lot of people don't realize, and what I hope people, if they view these proceedings, understand, the lights that you saw in those demonstrations, they're not there anymore, they're out. And hopefully by the time enough people notice it, we'll have them back in, but bottom line is the money. So, um, what you can do to help, um, we're not asking for tax dollars, we're asking, asking for support, and that is in the word of mouth, um, talk it up, sponsorships are important. And one last point I wanted to emphasize, um, if you take a look at how we paid for this the last time, we had a little bit of support through EDC that is not expected anymore. In fact, I think funding projects like these probably, there's a lesson we can all learn from this, is this, maybe this is the way these types of things can and should be funded in future, is when the public sector chooses to step forward and donate money. In that same vein, if you take a look at how we funded it before, it's amazing, but over half of what we raised was from entities, foundations, places that aren't even in the city of Celine. They're in, um, businesses, foundations, our townships. People think of Celine as their hometown, and this is one of the things, particularly in a town like ours, um, when you have a main artery running through it, uh, it really adds a lot of effect of what our downtown is, and I think that's the direction people want to go. We're also lucky to have the company that's doing this, um, taking us under their wing. Tom Kladzak, who I don't think many of you have met, but he's a real professional, um, trust me, trying to string those lights, if you ever, it needs to be done professionally, and it looks really good. Other works that he has are here in Plymouth, Charlevois, Farmington Hills, Ann Arbor, and wherever he goes, when he, or does a presentation after it gets past what the cause is going to be, um, he uses Celine as an example, along with some of those other cities, um, and it really speaks well for us. If you've ever been to Plymouth into Christmas time, a lot of that work is the same person that we're using, so. If I had my way, we light all the light trees, but we haven't got that kind of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osterling. Are there additional citizen comments?
Mary Hess, uh, as far as the lights, the one concern I have is the heavy equipment on our sidewalks. By Benny's Bakery, uh, the trucks that are removing the lights and putting, well, removing them, uh, are on our brick sidewalks, and, uh, being a sidewalk safety person, uh, the load and the sidewalks are not made for that heavy equipment, and I would hope that they would use the street, uh, opposed to the sidewalk for their decorations this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there any other citizen comments?
Just wanted to bring this up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, if there are no other citizen comments, then we move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Mr. Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gearbaugh. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public hearings, this is, uh, uh, Agenda Item thirteen dash sixty-seven, excuse me, um, Special Assessment for Fire Protection. First, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gearbaugh, open the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roth. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of opening the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the public hearing is now open. Affording anybody who would like to speak the opportunity to do so with a limit of three minutes per person.
Moved to close.
Been moved by Mr. Gearbaugh to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, public hearing is closed. Last, we need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May first, 2013 memo from City Treasurer Bennett regarding the fire cost as millage for FY14 rather than a special assessment to approve and adopt or not adopt Resolution Number Two, Special Assessment for Fire Protection, 2013, 2014, approving the estimated amount of three hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars for fire protection for fiscal year 2013, 2014.
Moved to approve and adopt.
Second. Moved by Mr. Gearbaugh to approve and adopt, seconded by Mr. Roth. Discussion. I would just like to say, and I've, I've beat this dog to death for, for a number of years, but our citizens need, need to know this, need to be cognizant of this. Um, our, our fire department is a, includes a district, it doesn't just serve the, the citizens of the city of Celine and those who reside within the corporate limits, um, and therefore, it's sort of a, 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 the concept is based on the economies of scale, and so, embedded in the motion this evening is, is the amount, that, that the city of Celine has to contribute to the operating cost of, of the Celine Area Fire Department, and that's around three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I can assure my friends and my constituents, if the city of Celine had to finance, had to fund its own fire department, it would cost substantially more than three hundred and thirty thousand. So I think this is just indicative of the sort of a progressive approach that this community has followed for a number of years. Our fire district dates back to, I believe, the nineteen seventies, so we were ahead of the curve, um, and we get an exceptional service for that amount of money, and so I think that the citizens, um, should be very proud of that. I know that, I'm very proud of it, and I think I speak for all of council, and I say we're very pleased, um, with the type of service, um, that our firefighters, our chief and our deputy chief provide to our citizens. Okay? Additional comments? Ms. Tahar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, I think it's also important to, to point out, we've said this before, that the choice of, to fund the fire protection this year through the millage rather than the special assessment was made at least in part because it gives us the opportunity to spread the costs a little bit more widely, and, um, so that the impact on individual homeowners is somewhat reduced in this way than if we had a special assessment, and I think that's, that's an important point to keep in mind.
Absolutely, thank you. Additional comments? No? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries. Moving on to unfinished business, Item twelve dash one seventy-eight, this is proposed budget for fiscal year fourteen, um, scheduling for the public hearing. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May first, 2013 memo from City Tre, or, from Treasurer Bennett, excuse me, and to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution as submitted, setting a public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014, on Monday, June the third, at seven thirty PM, with public notice to be given according to law. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve and adopt.
Moved by Peters to approve and adopt, seconded by Ms. Tahar. Discussion. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to unfinished business, zero six, zero six, two, uh, Monroe Street, Celine River Properties. First, we need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May second, 2013 memo from City Attorney Smith.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gearbaugh, is there a second?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Rhodes. Um, I'm going to turn it over and
Basically, we have a situation where Saline River Properties and JCI have been involved in a long lawsuit, and they are now at the point where they can settle that lawsuit. If they settle it, JCI will again acquire title to 232 Monroe. When it does so, it would have the obligation to do the remaining environmental cleanup, to remove the rubble, and do some other things on the site in accordance with a plan prepared by the EPA. In order to settle it, however, they would like to get clean title, which means that they're asking the city to release the 2007 development agreement and the easements granted pursuant to that development agreement, because the development is not going to occur on the property. The property will not be developed for any use. It would instead probably be finished to a park-like quality, to be a green space, and would be available potentially for use of city citizens. So that's what they're asking in exchange for being able to conclude the settlement with Saline River Properties.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there questions for our legal counsel? Mr. Rhodes.
Under this proposal, you inferred that it might be available for use by our citizens as open green space. So I'm assuming then that it would have to be maintained by JCI, be mowed, kept up somehow? No signs put up to say no trespassing or whatever?
Well, as long as JCI owns the property, JCI will have the obligation to maintain that in accordance with what city ordinances require. If JCI were to do what it has done in other communities, it has deeded such property to the communities once they've been cleaned up, once it's been cleaned up and put in a better condition.
Okay. Thank you.
And if it decided to do that, of course, we would have the option of either accepting that or not accepting that, depending on whether we like the terms of the conveyance or not.
Mr. Girbaugh.
Can you just clarify on which parcels? I want to make sure it's on both sides of Monroe Street, or is it just the west side?
It's just 232 Monroe. It's not 237 Monroe, which will continue to be owned by Saline River Properties.
And do we have any kind of timeframe? I know we didn't really clarify in here, when they would actually do the cleanup and start cleaning it up?
If the settlement's approved, they need to get their final cleanup plans approved by the EPA, and would envision having the cleanup completed within a year or two.
Thank you.
Additional questions for our legal counsel? No? Okay. Then there's a motion on the floor, moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Rhodes, to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, my friends, we have two different motions. If anybody would like to, if anyone has a preference, I would be happy to entertain their motion.
I'll move to approve and execute the request of Johnson Controls Incorporated to release and terminate the 2007 development agreement between Saline River Properties and the city of Saline, as well as any easements needed only to accommodate the proposed development of 232 Monroe Street, while ensuring the city obtains and retains any easements needed in 232 Monroe and 290 Monroe for existing utilities in those parcels, with the documents being in a form and substance acceptable to the mayor, city manager, and city attorneys.
Okay. So Mr. Girbaugh moves to approve and execute the request of Johnson Controls and the additional verbiage in the first motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Roth. Discussion. Mr. Girbaugh.
I appreciate Mr. Smith's work on this. I know we've been looking forward to having this resolved, and I think this is really the best opportunity for us to have this cleaned up, set aside, whether it's ever developed or not, doesn't matter. We just need to have this look better. And I think, as far as our concern, it's going to be one of the best things that we can resolve at this point and let it go, and have JCI take back over the responsibility. So this is a great opportunity for us.
Additional comments? Mr. Roth, I was wondering what the size of acreage this parcel is?
I probably have that here, but.
I was just curious for even estimation of how much green space that is.
It's maybe 20 acres or so. I don't think that's big.
Approximately 20 acres, we believe.
15 acres, maybe?
We can get an exact number, though, and get that information to you.
Have a crew, a bunch of trucks.
I just want to, before we vote on the motion, I just want to echo the comments that were articulated by my council colleague, Mr. Girbaugh. This is an important first step to remediate a contaminated property, and therefore improve the quality of life, not just in the Monroe Street region of our city, but throughout our community. And I especially want to thank our new legal counsel, Scott Smith, for his work on this issue. We greatly appreciate it, and this is a, this isn't an exciting development, but it's an important first step in remediating a contaminated site. So thank you, sir. Additional comments? No? Then I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to approve and execute signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries. Do not need to deal with the subsequent motion. Moving on to unfinished business, Item 13-0, or, excuse me, new business item 13-36, commercial sale listing agreement with Swisher Commercial. The first motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 1st, 2013 memo from City Manager Campbell.
Moved to acknowledge receipt.
It's been moved by Rhodes to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Actually, I probably shouldn't have done it like that. Let me, I'll call the question in a moment. That's my faux pas, my friends. Let me turn it over to Mr. Campbell to go over his memorandum and to address any questions, concerns you may have. I should also note that, I believe, his office distributed this evening, and it was placed at each one of your desks, or each one of your seats, excuse me, the available land, the amount for each, and how it's zoned, and the number of acres. Okay? I'm sorry, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, you may recall city council-directed staff to go back to Mr. Caparisi from Swisher Commercial to discuss the possibility of an alternative agreement terms from the most recent city council meeting, which we did, and which you have before you. And so you can, as you can see, they have been modified, the terms, and so we also, not only the terms, but we also, during discussion, also talked about the possibility of removing the 207 Monroe Street, as we call it, the former Karpinski property, from the fold, if you will, of being marketed. And so then the city, the positive, an alternative to that, alternative of keeping it with the other eight properties, or nine, eight properties, would be that the city could do a couple things, either market it itself, or hire some, another residential firm that specializes in residential sales, or put out, develop an RFP to send out to any interested parties to give proposals on what they would like to do with the property, and then also the amount of price as well. So I'm happy to do my best to answer questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Campbell? No? Okay. Then it's been properly moved and seconded to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries. Moving on to the subsequent motion. This will be a motion to authorize or not authorize the removal of the residential property on Monroe Street from the Swisher Commercial Agreement, and direct staff to seek alternative methods for the sale of the Monroe Street properties, as outlined in City Manager Campbell's May 1st, 2013 memo.
Moved to authorize.
Okay. Moved by Girbaugh to authorize. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tahar. Discussion. Mr. Burgoyne.
Actually, I have a motion to amend that motion.
Okay, well, what's your, please speak to your amendment, and we can determine at that time whether it be offered as a friendly amendment or not.
Okay. My proposal is to, would be to use Reinhardt Residential Brokers at 6% commission to authorize them for 90 days to establish a price, reach out to potential interested parties, and bring the contracts back before us, both for Monroe Street and for North Maple Properties, both of them being residential. So I do have wording to that. It's different from this. I think that would be the best interest of the city, to get it in production quickly, to not do it bureaucratically, in-house ourselves, but to use an expert, you know, use electrician for electrical work. And they would be able to process it very quickly and do that in less than three months. We would have the agreement. So I do have wording for that proposal.
All right. Let me, let me first acknowledge one thing, and of course, this is supported on the handout that was distributed this evening. The North Maple Property that you reference is not zoned residential. It's zoned I-2. And that's the second bullet point on the fact sheet that was distributed this evening, just to be clear.
I believe that that could be an error, because I believe it's zoned SPA-1. And SPA-1 does allow residential, and it's not 6.5 acres, it's 10.2 acres. It was 6.5 because there was a thought at one time to set off some areas for parking and so forth, but we only needed easement for the tower. That, in conjunction with the Escot Properties, would develop the best, if that could be put together. But we could sell it alone, without the Escot Property. That worked also. But I think Reinhardt could do this in less than 90 days, could accomplish both.
Mr. Campbell, do you want to make a quick comment?
Sure. I would agree with Mr. Burgoyne in that it is, has a SPA-1 overlay over top of I-2. So he is correct on that. And as far as it is six and a half acres currently, unless the council were to change direction, but the current, the current area is six and a half acres, based on, I believe, as Mr. Burgoyne alluded, the former city council had designated to carve out a piece for possible light rail, parking area, that type of thing, if at some point in the future light rail would ever come back, or come to fruition here in Saline.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Let me first ask the mover of the motion. Mr. Girbaugh, Mr. Burgoyne did not offer exact verbiage or wording for his amendment.
I could. I have it.
Yeah. But I assume that you get the gist of what he's advocating. Is that something you would be amenable to or not?
At this time?
No? Okay. And Ms. Tahar, I should ask as a second, are you amenable to that language or not?
No.
Okay. Mr. Burgoyne, then you would need to offer that as a standalone amendment, if that's your wish.
I don't mind taking, taking some property out of what's being negotiated, and then having another motion and discussing that motion.
Okay.
As to whether to place it with a broker. That's no big deal.
All right. All right. So we're going to continue to discuss this second motion under unfinished business, under the unfinished business section of our agenda, Item 13-36. Is there additional comments or questions? Mr. Girbaugh.
The reason why I'm supporting this removing from this is because I think there's enough issues that we have with this Monroe Street property, not only the formation of what we want to cut out of it in terms of the parking and such, but also potential concerns with neighbors and everything, that I think we need to set this aside and step back on it. Moving this in 90 days may not be feasible, and that's one of the reasons why. I want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with what goes ahead with this, because there is some other history with this property. And the other thing is, I do know that we kept, and was mentioned about the North Maple Road property, that if we want to cut that out, that might be a benefit, because if we do want to rezone that as something and be able to use it under residential, it's all right. But I do know that we kept that property out of the 10 acres for the potential of any kind of rail or potential transportation site. So at this point, I know that's the reason why I didn't move forward with Mr. Burgoyne's suggestions.
Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Mr. Burgoyne.
I certainly completely understand what Mr. Girbaugh is saying. I have additional information on the Monroe Street property, though. I understand that the area behind home base, where the bleachers are, should be kept by the city. Also, my understanding from Gary, Gary Roebel, sometime in the past, is that there is a connector of some type to Pleasant Ridge area on South Ann Arbor. Some type of easement from behind home plate. And so we should have enough room for a pickup truck, enough room for the bleachers, you know, enough room should be left there. So far as parking, I think that's misplaced, because that property is not included in the Tifa area, but south of the daycare is included in the Tifa area. So you could not use Tifa funds for parking if you put the parking on this site, and it would pull apart the site and not make it as marketable. But there's already a plan on the south of the daycare, down by the tennis court, basketball courts, and the tennis courts, to put parking on that side. So my thought would be, what would be available there would be about four acres, the three and a half acres, plus the hillside stuff, minus behind home plate, whatever is needed behind home plate.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Are there any additional comments related to this motion? No? Then I'll call the question. It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the third and final motion. Mr. Burgoyne.
I have an additional motion at this time.
If you'd like to offer it at this time?
Yes.
You may do so.
Okay. I would like to move that, to authorize a 90-day renewable sales agreement at 6% commission with Reinhardt Realtors for two residential properties, the first of about four acres on Monroe Street, and the other of about 10 acres on Maple Road, with Reinhardt to advise on the price and negotiate sales within the 90-day period for the two properties. So if I get a second, I'll explain my reasons.
Mr. Burgoyne, do you have that, that motion written?
Badly, but I can repeat it.
Why don't you repeat it one more time, for the clerk's benefit?
Okay. Move to authorize a 90-day renewable sales agreement at 6% commission with Reinhardt Realtors for two residential properties. The first of about four acres on Monroe Street, and the other of about 10 acres on Maple Road, with Reinhardt to advise on price and negotiate sales within the 90-day period for the two properties.
Okay. Clerk Gill, do you have that? Okay? Everyone clear on what Mr. Burgoyne's motion is? Okay? It's been moved. Is there a second?
I just a question. I think it's a good idea, and I wouldn't mind seconding, but it'd be nice to have something writing for Reinhardt, that they do agree to 6%.
I have a verbal agreement from Rick Magnon, who agrees to both 90 days and 6%. I talked to him.
Friends, we really can't discuss it until there's a second. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it so we can discuss it.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Burgoyne, do you care to elaborate?
Yes. I think that the location of parking would not be appropriate at the old service center. In the future, if, if rail ever came, an appropriate spot for parking could be found. I don't see why the service center would be the appropriate spot. Right now, we need taxable valuation. We need development. I don't see what hypothetically, theoretically, holding something back helps us. And on the Monroe Street property, the Tifa funds are south of the daycare, so once you save the area you need behind home plate, I think the rest makes the best contiguous development parcel.
Additional comments? Mr. Girbaugh.
Aren't we getting into a little slippery slope when we have council members making and negotiating with real estate agents? I've got a big concern right now with this whole notion.
Yeah. That, that would also be my concern, that it is, for lack of a better way to describe it, wildly inappropriate for council members, individual council members, or a subgroup of council members to negotiate a real estate agreement or any type of agreement or contract. And so for similar reasons, I would also oppose the amendment or the motion that's being offered by Mr. Burgoyne. Mr. Roth.
I was problem with the statement of the motion in regarding to the description of the parcels. It's been bothering me all along that it's not been clearly defined prior to giving it to the realtor, whoever the realtor may be. I'd like to see that it be exactly plotted out so there is no discussion on estimated amount of acreage, that the clear boundaries be set before it's put before anybody to go sell. So I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done on both properties.
Yeah, I think Mr. Campbell can elaborate and probably alleviate some of the confusion. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Absolutely, as I've said before, Mr. Roth, that is the plan to, before we would ever make it put out for the public to, whether a real estate brokerage firm is marketing it for us, or if we're taking bids, proposals for it. The direction the staff has thus far is to, for 207 Monroe, is to, for the city to maintain the portion that's currently being used for parking. And so we would absolutely do that. We would have it, and this is prior to obviously making it up for public, so, to purchase. So we would have official survey done and have that, the description, legal description, taking that out, or whatever part, and most likely adding those four lots that we talked about at the last meeting that are on the east end of that property, that are currently city lots that can't be used, and we simply just mow them. So that is my understanding, that's the direction City Council has given staff, and that's the direction we'll go unless City Council gives the staff a different direction.
I was just questioning the timing of it. We want to sell it, and we don't have it clearly defined what our product is, regardless whoever the realtor is. And I've been questioned this for several months now, and I don't see any concrete paper in front of me that describes both properties that is for sale. At the time, when it was, the RFP was replied to, I questioned the exact acreage, the layout, what we're retaining and not, and hoping by now, we would have that, something defined so sales can go forward. And if we want to sell it within 90 days or whatever it is, I'm not sure how quick we can move.
Mr. Burgoyne, do you have additional comments?
Yes, I do. First, I would object that I negotiated anything. I talked for about two minutes with one individual broker to find out if that was within the parameters of what they would do. That was information gathering. I didn't look at any documents, do any contract negotiations or anything. I just... Secondly, I agree with Mr. Roth that we should define what the product is. And I do not think that we should set ourselves up for a project that draws on the general fund when we can have a parking project that draws on Tifa. And also, excluding parking from those two parcels makes them less valuable, makes them less of an entity. And so I think the City Council should think that over and come to a decision. If your decision is opposite to what I'm thinking, that's fine, but I think we should come to a decision.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Additional comments? Mr. Girbaugh.
One of the things that we've talked on Tifa board, and actually talking with Luke, what's his last name?
Bonner.
Spark, that we potentially could modify our Tifa agreement and expand some of it to cover some of the other properties and such, which potentially, this possibly could be expanded into that. So I don't know what we can do, but looking at that, maybe also an alternative we need to look at, so that whatever we do, we may benefit from this whole thing being addressed.
I would ask the attorney if after 1994, you can expand Tifa districts.
Tax increment financing authority is basically sunsetted, and you can't add to the districts at this point.
Well, according to the Spark representative, that could be done. He's done it and attempted to try and do it, something, so I would like to have...
You can do that with other TIF kinds of districts, LDFAs, DDAs, and so forth, it's possible to do, but tax increment finance authorities are limited at this point.
Okay, I'm going to have Clerk Gill read the motion one more time before I call the question. So Clerk Gill.
Move Burgoyne, seconded Roth, to authorize a 90-day renewable sales agreement at 6% commission with Reinhardt Real Estate for the two residential properties, approximately four acres on Monroe and approximately 10 acres on Maple Road, with Reinhardt to advise on price and negotiate sales within 90-day period for the two properties.
Mr. Burgoyne.
Well, prior to calling the question, Mr. Roth is correct. We have to know whether we're talking about approximately four acres, or if you're taking parking out of it. To me, it doesn't make sense to break it up, and you can't use Tifa funds in that area, but you can use it south of the daycare. On the other one, are you going to do a hypothetical future thing and leave out three and a half acres? Yes or no? I think the City Council needs to have a sense of that before going forward.
Well, you offered a specific motion, and in accordance with parliamentary procedure, we're now voting after substantive discussion on that motion. We can continue to have an exacerbated dialogue about this issue, if that's your wish, and of course, we have a subsequent motion. But at this time, it's appropriate to be voting on the motion that you offered.
I think it's appropriate to figure out the acreage first and then vote on it.
Then you need to, yeah, then you need to withdraw your motion.
It's part of the motion, so there can be discussion on it.
Mr. Peters, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, I think that 90 days and 6% is a fair deal, but I think, I would want something in writing for Reinhardt.
Well, that's for the town to negotiate, the city to negotiate.
That's the need, what's for.
Ms. Taha.
And aside from any other considerations, I am not at all comfortable voting on a particular firm to carry out work for the city without having the process open to other companies to bid.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification, Reinhardt residential team did, in fact, they did submit a proposal at the 6%, but because the lion's share of these parcels are commercial or industrial related, the review committee believed that since we did have four, we received six proposals, and four of them were of high quality or sound quality. They had a lot of commercial and industrial experience as opposed to residential. So at that point, there was, the discussion was, the direction was to combine all those properties. So just for clarification, we have, in fact, the committee did, and the biggest reason why they didn't go forward was because they had, we had some quality, commercial, industrial experience folks, so just for clarification.
So it sounds like the committee did a lot more than my two minutes' contact. So there's this whole background in Reinhardt, and they would do the 6%. I think what we need to do is figure out, do we want to sell four acres and 10 acres, or do we want to hold back parking somewhere? And once that's figured out, the motion can either go or not, and this does not affect the industrial parcels.
Additional comments? Mr. Girbaugh.
I agree with Ms. Taha, this needs to go out as a bid. We've changed the whole parameters of what the original bid was. There may be other companies that are out there that could potentially do it at a lower. We got in this last time about a lower commission. I don't like this, it doesn't smell right, and at this point, I will not support this motion.
Mr. Burgoyne, then I'm going to ask for a vote.
This is not a bid. This is not a formal bid process of any type. You go out and you seek a way to...
That's not what the motion is. Motion says Reinhardt.
It's not a bid, though. We didn't have a formal bid process. We had RFPs, and people responded with information, and we're evaluated.
Okay. We're going to proceed to vote now on the additional motion that Mr. Burgoyne offered that was seconded by Mr. Roth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nays have it, and the motion fails. Moving on to the third motion under unfinished business, item 13-36. This will be a motion to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the commercial listing agreement with Swisher Commercial with the revisions outlined in the city manager, and city manager Campbell's May 1st, 2013 memo for the sales of property, with all sales to come before City Council for final approval.
Move to authorize.
Second.
Move by Mr. Girbaugh, seconded by Ms. Taha to authorize. I'm going to break sort of a formal tradition around here, which states that the mayor usually is the individual to speak last on a motion, and I'm going to speak first on this motion before opening up for additional comments and dialogue. This issue is a priority for me, and I believe it's a priority for this community. Approval of this motion directly relates to two themes that I ran for mayor on and two themes that I outlined and further discussed at my State of the City address in January, which is economic development, financial stewardship. I think it's important to realize and important to acknowledge that the sale of the properties, although important, is not what's really profound and significant here. What is significant is that these parcels could be transitioned from public ownership to private ownership. And in the process, investments can be made, businesses can be created, and jobs can hopefully flourish. I want to thank Tony Capparese from Swisher Real Estate for being so accommodating and so patient. One of the things that I was reminded of just this past week when I was talking to somebody about this issue, is like with all things in life, if you want a quality service, you want a quality product, you have to pay for it. And Mr. Capparese and Swisher Real Estate have an outstanding reputation. He's an individual who lives within the corporate limits of the city and has invested in our community's future, and I'm sure that he will aggressively market these parcels. I also should note that the 10% commission fee, if you look at the analysis in memorandum that the committee reviewed in advance of recommending Swisher, all of the firms that staff would have been comfortable recommending also asked for a 10% commission. And again, just to reiterate on a previous point, Mr. Capparese and Swisher have been very accommodating and very flexible, and have now adjusted it to 10% if he's working with another realtor, and 8% if he's working alone. So I enthusiastically endorse this motion. I urge a yes vote. And now I'll turn it over to my colleagues if they have additional thoughts or comments. Ms. Taha.
I also strongly support this motion. I think, first of all, we set, City Council set forth a course of action, which has been followed through, and Mr. Capparese has been very forthcoming in negotiating with the city. The rate is very favorable. I note also, I believe this came up while I was absent, but at the last meeting, that the city, when it was marketing these parcels on its own, was offering a 10% commission as well. So the concession that he's made on the commission rate is, I think, very favorable. I also appreciate the fact that he's a long-term and contributing member in the community, and that his reputation is a longstanding and solid one. So I'm very much in favor of the approval of this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Taha. Additional comments? Mr. Burgoyne.
I think the extension to one year is unfortunate. Also, I think that, much like the Monroe property not being defined, these other properties are not defined. They're all industrial, but the city doesn't really look forward to pulling in industrial boxes in the future. We actually need to look at the properties and see what is best for the community. I also think that Swisher is probably the third-best firm for this. Signature Associates Encore International, which includes offices in Germany, has been the best seller in Celine for industrial properties. They sell the most. Jim Chady of that firm is a connected name. The second-best is Jim Chaconis, who formerly was with McKinley, but now he's with Colliers International. So Colliers would be the second-best firm that sold the largest number, second-largest number of properties in Celine. I think that tying this up for a year is too long because the City Council needs to act and process on the uses for this property. The current designated uses are not positive for the city. They would be negatives for the city, considering that they're not the most aesthetic, they don't provide the best service to the community residents, they will look tired and old over time, as industrial buildings do, and personal property is going away. So they will not bring in as much of economic development, they'll bring in less economic development. So shooting for less economic development and tying this up for a year instead of half a year, I think is detrimental.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Additional comments? Mr. Rhodes.
I was wondering if we could request from the real estate firm a quarterly report by property of what activity has occurred? Is that feasible?
I don't see any reason why not. Did you hear that comment, Mr. Capparese?
I provide reports that can be automatically generated through our official property information system.
Very good. Thank you.
I just want to add one additional comment because there appears to be a little bit of confusion. This city has a history, and this history continues to the present. We stand ready to work with any potential developer, any business owner, to work with them to make sure their business can relocate in Celine, can develop in Celine, and can thrive in perpetuity. So if there are individuals who are looking at parcels and need more flexibility or need a zoning change, we stand ready to consider that and to work with them to the best of our ability.
There are no further comments? Then it's been properly moved and seconded to authorize? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Roth.
I've been uncomfortable with the whole dealing far as, from the time the RFPs were received, opened up, and where we stand today. I'm just very uncomfortable, number one, that the properties weren't clearly defined. And far as the selection of the realtors, the committee, their results, and what they considered, I'm not sure the council was privileged to, given privilege to what criteria they had. And far as, I was disappointed when we asked Mr. Kopinski to come back, negotiate with him, the prior time, and he came back and just redefined and really didn't make any movement on such. It seems to be, far as the message is trying to put across, I'd like to have more definiteness so we don't set ourselves up for failure and more discussions that we have, that I'd like to be clear outright forth, this is what we have, this is what we can do with, and this is what we want. And I also kind of question, if it's been in the books for many, many years, why hasn't there been any movement when any realtors, any of the companies submitted the RFPs? Why haven't they taken action before? And I also believe that they all didn't come in at 10%, and if, what the criteria was far as that we stuck with 10%. There's so many unknowns to me that I don't feel comfortable with supporting anything other than going back to new RFPs. Now, we're splitting this up in so many pieces, it's become super complicated.
Mr. Girbaugh.
Some of this property we've been on since, I was, been on for sale since the late '90s when I first was on in 98, and it didn't move. And at this point, we're still sitting on it. We're fighting over commissions, we're looking at this property. If it had been on the tax rolls 10 years ago, we would not be having this discussion had we been more aggressive and assertive at that point in time. At this point, I agree with Mr. Burgoyne that we need to look at different advantages for this, but until we get some interest or get somebody out there fighting for us to go after these targets, we're not going to have that happen. People aren't knocking on our door. We need somebody doing this to come in. We've only had two that are knocking on our door, and it's because of residential property, which isn't generating the kind of investment that we need to have, or the jobs and types of things. It's only short-term, and when those come on board, we're still going to have to pay for them in the long run. My concern is that we need to move forward, we need to get going on this. We've had staff review the proposals that came in, we've had review by this council. We had us negotiating with a vendor up here, which is not what we should be doing. We have a city manager that runs this job. We need to get, move ahead on this, and I think at this point, we've got a proposal, it's for a year, we've got someone that's willing to take this on, because we're getting to the point where I think somebody's going to say, I'm not going to do this because I don't want to deal with the city of Celine, because they've gotten to a point where they can't even move forward on a small item like this. So we have identified the parcels that we have, we've taken the one off that We've taken the one off that we don't know quite sure which is Monroe Street, and we do have an issue with the Maple Road if we wanna expand that to make it larger, but we have a distinct parcel there. All of these properties have been identified. They've been identified for 15 years. Let's just move forward, people. Let's get this done.
Additional comments? Mr. Burgoyne, quickly, please.
Well, there was a statement that we're no longer, we're no longer advertising these. That isn't true. This is currently on CPX. Previously was on Louvnet. It's the widest-used broker exchange. It's currently there now. It's at 10%. The reason that brokers said 10%, they looked on CPX, they saw 10%, they said 10%. It's what we told them on their broker exchange. So it's currently actively being listed right now. There hasn't been anything for the past eight years because many manufacturing jobs moved overseas, and there are empty manufacturing buildings that cost half of the amount of building on a new greenfield. That's what's happening. And from our point of view of the city, what we need to do is find uses through the City Council taking action to allow zoning uses that would be good for the city, good for people, and would move. Industrial is fine.
Okay. We're gonna move on to voting. It's been properly moved by Mr. Girba and seconded by Tihar to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to new business. My friends, if you will indulge me, because we have a young man here who has a very ambitious Eagle Scout project, and I would prefer him not to have to wait another hour. We just got done with a presentation about empowering young people, and so if we could bump new business item 13-73 up to the first item under new business, I would appreciate you accommodating me.
I agree.
Okay? Thank you. Ms. Scruggs, do you wanna join him? Okay? So this is new business item 13-73, Eagle Scout Project Information Kiosk at Curtis Park. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 28, 2013 letter from Jacob Douglas and the May 2, 2013 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel regarding the Eagle Scout Project at Curtis Park to approve or not to approve the request of Jacob Douglas to construct and install an informational kiosk in Curtis Park at the location depicted on the map. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved to approve by Mr. Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters. Mr. Douglas and Ms. Scruggs, thank you for being here.
I'd like to introduce Jacob Douglas. He approached me quite some time ago, maybe back in November or December, with a desire to do an Eagle Scout project, and I had suggested that we need this down at Curtis Park. It's an informational kiosk that can show our park rentals and different events that are going on, also talking about the different rules in the park that people need to know when they come to visit. And he was very agreeable to that project, and so we met and we talked with our park foreman, Dan Bennett, to, you know, look at the different location. He's worked with Gary Rubel quite extensively, so I'm not gonna steal his thunder. I'll let him tell you a little bit more about the project, and you can ask him some questions as well. So here's Jacob.
Hello, my name is Jacob Douglas. I'm a member of Saline Boy Scout Troop 446. I'm currently completing the requirements to become an Eagle Scout, the highest rank in the Boy Scout. To select my Eagle project, I considered several projects. The one I selected was after a discussion with Ms. Carla Scruggs from Saline Parks and Recreation Department. It's a value to many people who enjoy the Curtis Park. I presented my proposal to Saline Parks Commission, and they approved. Now I'm speaking in concurrence. My project includes the building of an information kiosk for Curtis Park using wood and special locking box purchased from a supplier which holds information. This project is on the Saline Parks and Recreation list for Eagle Scout projects that they need completed. Ms. Scruggs and I have scoped out the location for the kiosk at Curtis Park. Mr. Gary Rubel approved the location as well. I expect to begin work on the project as soon as it is approved by you, the Saline Council. It has been approved by the Troop 446 Committee and the Parks Commission. I expect the fundraising and construction of the project to take several months and be installed in the late summer of 2013. I will need assistance of about five scouts, two adults. I will recruit them from the scout troop and my family by verbal request and advertisement. The preliminary price range for the materials is $510, which I believe that is the maximum the materials would cost. Scouts and leaders will provide the labor for the constructions. There will be carpooling offered to any scouts helping that don't have arrived to the site already. Also, we will be taking the necessary safety precautions during the building and installing phase of the project. I respectfully request your approval to proceed. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Peters.
I'd just like to say, Mr. Douglas, that first of all, congratulations on going for your Eagle Scout. That's a big deal, and it matters to employers. We've hired a lot of people over the years in the corporations I work, and they look heavily at that. That's important. And also, as Ms. Scruggs can probably tell ya, we have a hard time getting information out many times, and that's not only a good scout project, but that's really beneficial to the community. It'll be a big help in telling people, go to the park when we have different events and dates and times, so that, thank you very much for taking it on. It's great.
Additional comments or questions? No? Fabulous. Thank you so much for being here. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Ms. Tihar.
Yes, I also think it's a, looks like a great project, and I just wondered what your fundraising plans are.
We're gonna be doing either a bottle drive or a bake sale for our fundraising.
Then you'll advertise that widely?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tihar. Any additional comments or questions? Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it. Good luck to you on your, I'm sure you will become an Eagle Scout. We look forward to that, but thank you for choosing to do your service project in the city of Saline and better one of our parks. We greatly appreciate that. Thank you so much. It's been properly moved by Mr. Rhodes and seconded by Peters to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to new business item 13-68, Retirement of City Clerk. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 20, 2013 letter from Diane S. Hill notifying the city of her intent to retire effective May 18, 2013, after 41-plus years of service to the city, and to thank Ms. Hill, Mrs. Hill, excuse me, for her service with sincere best wishes in her retirement. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Rhodes to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Girba. Clerk Hill, do you care to make any comment?
No.
No? Okay. We'll let the memorandum speak for itself. Is there any discussion? Mr. Rhodes.
Have we ever not accepted a letter of resigning?
I don't think so. Okay. So it's been properly moved and seconded to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to new business item 13-74, this is City Clerk vacancy. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 1, 2013 memo from City Manager Campbell regarding the City Clerk vacancy and to approve or not approve the appointment of Amy Rutledge as interim City Clerk beginning at 5:00 PM on Friday, May 10, 2013, through the date that the new City Clerk begins employment with the city at a salary of $54,598 during the time she is serving as interim clerk. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Seconded by, okay, moved to approve by Mr. Peters. I'll let Mr. Roth second it. Discussion. Mr. Campbell, do you wanna make a brief overview of your memorandum?
Sure. Well, first of all, it's, with someone like Diane, it's hard to say replace, because I don't know that we're actually ever gonna be able to replace her. Some very large shoes to fill, but we do have a great team, and certainly it'd be bumpy, but we'll move forward because we've got a great team, but we are, we are gonna miss you, Diane, and I thank you. It's been a privilege and honor to serve alongside you, to serve the residents of Saline for the last five-plus years. I say five-plus years, and then 41-plus, so a little difference here, but thank you so much. But as my memo outlines, proposing to appoint Amy Rutledge Deputy Clerk as interim clerk and to open this up, I mean, we do certainly have a great, solid team in the department as well, but I believe it's, you know, we need, it's our responsibility to provide the best possible staffing for this critical position to our residents, and that's not to say that we don't already have it. We at least wanted to go out there and see what's available, because like I said, we do have top-quality staff in our clerk's office as well, the deputy as well as the assistant clerk's positions. So, but I would propose that, a little bit similar to what we've done in the past, to have a committee that we would, staff would put together the posting and receive applications, most likely for 30 days, and then evaluation committee made up of staff and a council member to go through those, evaluate those applications, conduct interviews, and make a recommendation to the City Council, and that's what I would propose.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Are there any questions? No? I would just like to add that, because I spoke to our city manager in advance of the meeting this evening, it is my intent to bring to our next council meeting in two weeks a plan for you all to commission the members of the task force or the working group to evaluate and then make a recommendation to, as to who will be our permanent City Clerk moving forward. So hope to take the next step at our next council meeting in two weeks. Okay? So it's been properly moved and seconded to approve by Peters and then by Roth. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to new business item 13-69, this is Title VI, Non-Discrimination Plan. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 26, 2013 memo from Deputy Clerk Rutledge. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Roth to acknowledge.
Acknowledge.
Yep, to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Rhodes. Discussion. Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to the subsequent motion. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the Title VI Non-Discrimination Plan as submitted and to authorize or not authorize the mayor and deputy clerk to execute the Title VI policy statement and the Title VI assurances and to submit said plan to the Michigan Department of Transportation upon completion.
Move to approve and authorize?
Moved by Girba to approve and authorize. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tihar. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to new business item 13-70, Removal of Emergency Phone at Milpon Park. This will be a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the April 24, 2013 memo from Jody Roberts, Parks Commission Secretary, and the April 30, 2013 memo from DPW Director Fordice, and the April 30, 2013 memo from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs.
So move.
Moved to acknowledge receipt by Mr. Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters. Discussion. Mr. Peters.
Just to note, the people know that phone hasn't worked for years down there, and we're afraid that people might be trying to use it, and it really doesn't connect to the police, so let's just take it out. And that was actually pre-cell phone, we put that post in, and we have cell phones and other communications, so it's time to get that out.
Do you care to make any additional comment, Ms. Scruggs? No? Okay. Very good. Additional comments? Okay? Hearing none. It's been properly moved and seconded to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. The subsequent motion, as amended, will state that this council approves and authorizes or not authorizes the removal of the emergency phones at Milpon Park immediately. Is there a motion?
Move to approve and authorize.
Moved by Rhodes to approve and authorize. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Girba. Discussion. Mr. Peters.
Just a quick clarification on that motion while we changed it. At the Celtic Fest, we was going to have a radio station do a broadcast live from the site, and we thought originally that they would be needing that phone line to do that, but it turns out after talking with the radio station and some other techs that they will not. They have other ways of doing it, so that's why the second half of that motion was deleted.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Peters. Additional comments? Mr. Roth.
I just wanna be sure that that line is removed from our billing since it hasn't worked for many years, and we've been paying fees for it. I wanna be sure it's not overlooked, that it is removed.
Ms. Scruggs is nodding in assurance that, yes, it will be. Okay? Additional comments? Hearing none. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve and authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving on to new business item 13-71, this is a fund balance policy. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proposed fund balance policy and to approve and adopt or not adopt the said policy as submitted.
Move to acknowledge receipt of the proposed fund balance profit, policy and to approve and adopt said policy as submitted effective one year from today. And I add that because we'll be in a proper balance by that time. I'll make it effective one year from today.
Okay. Mr. Burgoyne has offered an amended motion, which would read that we acknowledge receipt of the proposed fund balance policy and approve and adopt the policy as submitted effective one year from today. Is there a second to that motion? I ask again for a second for that motion. Then that motion dies for a lack of support. Now I ask for a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proposed fund balance policy and to approve and adopt, or not adopt, the said policy as submitted. Moved to approve by Mr. Roth.
As submitted.
Okay? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tihar. Treasurer Bennett, since you really led the charge on this, would you care to comment briefly?
As one of the goals in our goal sessions, sessions that the City Council's had with staff, the City Council identified the fact that they wanted to maintain financial stability, and the City Council has in the past, you know, done a good job at attempting to do that, but as we all know, the economy and everything else has given us every twist and turn they can to prevent that from happening. So moving forward and being a little bit more proactive, we researched and had worked together with the City Council to bring some verbiage into a policy that not only this board has some meats and backbone to it, but the boards coming ahead of you that knows what the goals are of the City Council to maintain financial stability. We'd like to maintain a financial stability goal that the council set between 15% and 20% of our annual expenditures in any given fiscal year. That, I think, we projected out to be around three months of operating expenses in the event of a, you know, of a major event or anything like that. Currently, we are working on about a 9%. I don't have my budget numbers with me, but, so to maintain and start strengthening that fund balance, and when I refer to the fund balance, I'm talking about an unreserved fund balance so that we have funds available in the event of an emergency or unforeseen circumstances or just some things that are out of our control, such as a personal property tax elimination and some of the other pending legislation. Been dealing a little bit with healthcare reform right now, and so there's a lot of things on the horizon that we should really have some money in reserves to, you know, to prepare for that day. The policy also states that in the event that there is a substantial, you know, balance so that, so that no citizen is concerned that, you know, we're making a profit here, if that money reaches a certain time, the fund balance is gonna be reviewed every year as part of the annual budget process, and if it reaches or exceeds, greatly exceeds, then there's specific directions to go with that fund. One of those, and the very most priority, highest priority that this council set is the unfunded retirement liability that we heard earlier today that our county is, you know, is in the process of seeking funding for that. So our goal is to start being proactive and being able to reserve funds for those types of events, and the council has met with us. I think we reviewed it three times together as a group, and I believe with some language rewriting by all of you, I think we've got a pretty sound policy that, I think the steps say that we're gonna work towards it, so if we made the effective date now, I believe that you're taking the right steps by acknowledging this policy and going forward. by acknowledging this policy and going forward to attempt to fiscal responsibility and balancing the budget accordingly.
Thank you, Treasurer Bennett. Are there comments or questions for Ms. Bennett? Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah, I, I agree with the idea of shooting towards something, but it's unlikely that our fund balance will be more than about 13% this year. We will not reach the 15 to 20% until the following year. We are on an upswing economically, so we will be increasing, but if, if the thought process is, is you know you're not going to achieve it this year, I'm okay with that. I, I just don't want this to say, yeah, we're going to do 15 or 20%. The other reason I don't like it adopted this particular year is, um, I think there's an unwarranted tax increase this year. It's not, it's not soundly based. And, um, if this provides support for unwarranted tax hike, I don't like it for that purpose. I do like the goal of achieving this by another year, in the second year.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Are there additional comments or any questions? Let me ask first, any questions for Treasurer Bennett? Thank you. Okay. Any additional comments?
I would just say that, you know, I'm, I'm very enthusiastic about this motion and about the adoption of this policy. I think a lot of people would probably look at this document and, and take it at face value and, and see it as purely symbolic, but I think it's a positive and pretty important affirmation of, of our support for growing our, our fund balance and, and maintaining a very financially stable and, and solid municipality. And as our treasurer indicated, it also outlines ways in which if we were to enter into a better economic era and have a, a very robust fund balance, how we could go about utilizing those funds in an effective manner. So, this document, for those of you in the audience and those of you who will be watching this, this meeting at home, this document, as our treasurer indicated, has been reviewed three times by the council. In fact, this is the fourth time that members of council have had an opportunity to review it. So, the process has been very thorough and deliberate and I think it's an important step in, again, affirming our support for a well-managed, financially stable city. So, I want to thank the, the city treasurer and her department for their work on this. Thank you.
Additional comments? Okay? Then it's been properly moved and seconded by Roth, uh, moved by Roth and seconded by Tahar to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it and the motion carries. Moving on to new business item 13 dash 72. This is wellhead protection grant. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 30, 2013 memo from Water Production and Pollution Control Superintendent Skoll and to authorize or not authorize staff to make application to MDEQ for a grant in the amount of $5,450 for reviewing and updating the city's approved wellhead protection program. Is there a motion?
To authorize.
Move by Girbaugh to authorize. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peters. Mr. Skoll, do you care to comment?
Actually, yes. Um, the city's, the city's original wellhead protection program was issued in 2000. And in 2005, we had a well closure program where we closed six wells that were abandoned and potential threats to the wellhead. So, the states made money available to update our program or update any community that applies for the grant to keep it an active program. Unfortunately, due to timing constraints, I had my memo put out before I actually got a chance to view the grant application. And after reviewing the grant application, I feel we can do it in-house, so that's going to lower the price to $4,000 instead of $5,400.
Okay. Okay. So, acknowledging the comment by Mr. Skoll, then I would recommend that we modify that number in the motion. Repeat that figure one more time, Mr. Skoll?
I'm sorry, it's, uh, it's going to be $4,000.
$4,000? So, you're requesting it to make application to MDEQ for a grant in the amount of $4,000?
Correct.
I've got a question.
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Roth?
Could you explain exactly what this program is?
Yes, the wellhead protection program is set up to define the wellhead area that a community uses for its community water supply to, to inventory potential threats such as abandoned wells, underground storage tanks, above-ground storage tanks, anything that could possibly enter the aquifer. We, we have formed a committee. We also have a, a reaction plan in case a contaminant is discovered, but basically that's the gist of it.
Okay. Mr. Girbaugh?
And this will help identify whatever potential oil wells and such that may be...
Correct, but this is only going to go for the 10-year delineation area which extends north of the city basically to where Ann Arbor and Wagner Road split. It's about the northern boundary of this line. So, it'll only, it'll only inventory any threats within that 10-year area.
But we can use this information to keep the public informed of where potentially this could be an issue.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Um, Mr. Girbaugh and Mr. Peters, you were the mover and seconder of this motion and Mr. Skoll is suggesting that we modify the amount, reduce it from $5,450 to $4,000. Are you comfortable with that change?
Yes.
Mr. Girbaugh? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Okay. So, then we'll amend that to $4,000. Okay? Mr. Burgoyne, excuse me?
Um, the, uh, the threat to people's drinking water and saline is from the north.
Correct.
And we look at 10 years. Do you also look at the effect of septic's getting into the groundwater and the density and the density of pollution or other things? And also, why only 10 years? Why not 15 or 20 years? Why, why only 10?
Originally, that was what the state required and that's what they were financing was a 10-year delineation area.
Do they finance 15 year?
I, I'm not aware of that.
Or 20? No.
And as far as septic fields go, the, the, the aquifer which we draw our water from is about 120 feet down, so the possibility of contamination to a septic field is, is pretty, pretty little, you know?
Well, I'm also thinking nitrates and over time, leaching from agricultural sources and stuff like that. Is there some knowledge of how that contaminates over time and what the threat is and what to do? Do you do that too?
Not as part of this plan. Uh, we do monitor for nitrates annually and we monitor for a variety of contaminants, volatile organics, synthetic organics, several, you know, a list of different contaminants that we do monitor for. And fortunately, the city's reverse osmosis system is, will remove most of that if detected. Fortunately, we have none detected so far.
Okay. Do you have additional questions, Mr. Burgoyne?
Um, well, just a thought that if you have septic's and leaching and so forth, that's probably as, not as good to do above your aquifer as if you had sewered system and took it away. So, to the extent that there was development in the future that would be sewered systems that would take away the contaminants, however, that would occur to, to our north side, I think that would be to our benefit.
Thank you. Let's just know, Mr. Campbell?
I just, just for, in case anybody was wondering why the difference in cost. Initially, uh, Mr. Skoll, again, as he mentioned, wasn't sure of how detailed the, the grant application was or is. And so, we initially had gotten, received a quote from Tetra Tech to help us fill that out, but after looking at, they are going to just provide a cursor, a review for us at, at no cost. So, that's why that goes down to the $4,000. So, just, just in case anybody was wondering.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Skoll. If there are no further comments or questions, it's been properly moved and seconded to authorize that the city make application to MDEQ in the modified amount of $4,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it and the motion carries. Moving on to discussion items, commission and committee reports. Somebody have any commission or committee reports? Mr. Peters?
Yeah, for the Parks Commission on Saturday, we had a very nice turnout at the Brecken Park Spruce Up. We painted the play equipment and we did a lot of brush and trimming and cleaning up. And then we have an Arbor Day celebration. We planted two beautiful trees. I'd just like to say that Nature's Garden on East Michigan, they donated the beautiful blue spruce. And thanks to Luton Farms Nursery on South Wagner Road, they donated a white spruce which was gorgeous. And after we planted our trees, we had an official ribbon cutting to open up the non-motorized path from the library down through the park. And that went very well too. So, it was a nice, a nice day. And we've got one more coming up on May 19th. It's a Sunday and that will be the mustard garlic weed pull at Colony Park. And it will be, it'll be from 11 till 2. That's again at May 19th, from 11 to 2 at Colony. We'll have coffee, donuts and hot dogs. So, be a good time.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Peters. Additional commission and committee reports. Mr. Roth?
Uh, the Parks Commission met this past week and we had lots of discussions and lots, many suggestions and many items coming forth through the council for some improvements that's being recommended.
You mean Oakwood Cemetery Task Force?
Yes.
Okay. Yep. Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Rhodes?
Environmental Commission report. Many of you know that we had the Environmental Commission cosponsored an electronic waste recycling event on April 27th along with the Fifth Corner, our teen center. It was quite successful. We had donations just under $1,250 given cash by those folks who came and dropped off things. And we filled two semi trucks with electronic waste material which will not go into landfills now or be found alongside ditches. And, um, it was a great day. It was, the weather was, was fine. The folks that came through were happy and smiling and glad to get rid of their stuff. And the volunteers we had were happy and smiling and so it was, it was a, a great success. And in another month, probably, we will know how much we get paid for that electronic waste from Vintage Tech Recycling Company. And we anticipate that this will be done each year in the spring. We have in the past done them spring and fall, but I think we'll, we'll probably hold it to just spring because we, I don't want to overtax our volunteers or myself. The Environmental Commission is also continuing to have discussions with the county to host a hazardous waste collection date here in the city sometime this fall. And that would be for things like old paint can, paints and tires and, and that, not furniture, not electronic waste. You have to hold on to that till next spring now if you missed this one. The Environmental Commission will also be staffing the farmer's market the third Saturday of each month now that that has moved to the outside. We will be there with free literature for adults and children and also with rain barrels which we have for sale, $45 apiece. And I think that's probably it for now.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Girbaugh?
Um, just a couple of brief things from Planning Commission, just to show that we are seeing some more investment in things happening in town. A new subway building is going to be built at The Oaks across from the Ford plant and that's a welcome. They're moving from the west side and having their own facility. And then also Robinson Funeral Homes are going to be doing some renovations to their building and basically putting in a parking lot and expanding and providing a more effective way for them to help individuals in wheelchairs and such. And they were doing a very historic and very representative building that will be a, well, another benefit to us in that area. So, I'm looking forward to those being, and going forward. So, we are getting investments and people are moving ahead with some projects at this time.
Appreciate you sharing that, Mr. Girbaugh, because those, both the subway and then the, the renovation and really almost in addition to, to Robinson Baumiller Funeral Homes are, are important investments in our community and I think may be indicative of, of a, of a trend that will, will start to appear in our community, which is more investment, more development, more expansion.
And one good thing about the funeral home change, that is a benefit of our recent overlay change that we put in place as a council and helped facilitate that development and improvement.
Yep. Thank you. Any other commission or committee reports? Okay? Moving on to reports and other announcements. Mr. Rhodes?
The Resident Support Services Task Force has met and agreement was reached on the method for collecting data about the support services that are available to our residents, the format, and responsibilities for various areas were assigned. We continue to, not continue, we've started to move forward.
Appreciate that. Thank you for your leadership in that endeavor. Reports or other announcements? Just very briefly, I believe you should have all received an email from me Friday afternoon or late Friday morning regarding my thoughts, council member Peters' thoughts and city manager Campbell's thoughts regarding the Michigan Municipal League Capitol Conference that took place last month. Later in the afternoon, Mr. Rhodes also emailed out his comments and I believe Mr. Rhodes has a document that you'd like to distribute this evening. Is that correct, Mr. Roth?
I do.
Okay. Yep. I'm gonna sort of, because of the, the hour, I'm also let my comments speak for themselves. I always enjoy the MML Capitol Conference. For those of you who have not had an opportunity to attend, I encourage you to do so in the future. Like all of the, the forums and functions that MML hosts and organizes, it's very informative and I, and I thought in many ways it was, it was very enlightening. But if my colleagues who attended would care to elaborate further, I would welcome that. Mr. Peters, do you have anything else you'd like to...
Yeah, one of the sessions I attended was on vacant properties and unkept properties and we had an interesting discussion. And basically it boils down to you're dealing with two types of people. If you're going to walk up to somebody's door and, and knock on and tell them they need to paint their house and it's going to cost them $5,000, you need to go prepared. And sometimes you're going to run into people who are sort of antisocial and maybe a little combative. And if that's the case, you'll make sure you take a neighbor with you, document what's said and be a little bit thoughtful of how you approach this, this type of person. And if you're going to deal with, the other type of person you usually run into is the elderly and this is a little bit different. Usually finance is really a problem and when you approach someone like that, you need to go up with a game plan. Do some research, see if you can't get a church group to help paint, some volunteers. So, just don't go up and make a complaint when you go up to somebody's door to say you need to clean up the property and maybe it's a public safety health issue or it's unsightly. Think it through and go up with a plan in mind and things will go a lot easier.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. Campbell, do you want...
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, the, the one session that had gone separate from, from the rest of the team was the EVIP session, the Economic Vitality Incentive Program. It was presented by Representative of Department of Treasury. Unfortunately, it was, it was very adversarial and I haven't, I haven't, I don't recall over the many years that I've been attending that conference, a session that was such a buzz after it happened. So, I felt a little bit bad for, for the Department of Treasury representative, but, but essentially in a nutshell, lots of concerns, lots of complaints and hopefully taking that back to Department of Treasury as well as the governor's office, the concern of continually changing the rules, if you will. If you, some of you may recall, two years ago was the first year they changed it from statutory revenue sharing to the EVIP and that was per Governor Snyder's inaugural budget. And then the last year, the second budget, it was tweaked a little bit and, um, the governor, they, they mostly discussed what the governor has proposed in this year's budget, which for the most part stayed the same. However, there are additional pieces of legislation out there. One from the House of Representatives, one from the Senate. The one from the House leaves us the same amount this year with no increase or decrease, but, but even with additional rules and regulations that we have to abide by. And the Senate's legislation has a four, I believe, 4.8% increase, which is certainly very welcomed. And then also, I believe, I can't recall, I don't know, Scott, do you recall if there's any additional rules that they were adding to it or taking away? I can't, I don't recall. I can't remember, but, but it was going to be much better as well as giving an increase. So, but, so that in a nutshell is where it is and it was, like I said, it was pretty adversarial, so very interesting to, uh, sitting there and observe that. So, thank you.
Mr. Rhodes, did you have any comments you care to make, sir?
Only one and that is I need to apologize to the group. I have to bring my notes with me this evening and so I'm not prepared to, to talk about the conference. Perhaps I could do that some other time.
Absolutely. We would welcome that. Mr. Roth, do you want to make a comment or two?
I apologize, I apologize for being late with it, but I, this is my second conference I attended and I'm very much impressed with, with the MML representatives are doing for I attended. And I'm very much impressed with what the MML representatives are doing for us as far as representing the cities, the state of Michigan, whereas their concerns. One of the concerns that they talk about with transportation is that this gas tax or funding increasing revenues for the states to improve roads. There's several proposals out there. It looks, it looks like that something's going to happen in order to bring in the monies. But the concern is, is that just gonna be for the state roads? Is the State Department of Highway's gonna take all the money? Are we gonna get any of the funds back to the local communities? So they're looking for that. It's also, it was interesting how they pointed it out for as, in many years, that the funding that they promised of revenue sharing, that they collect the monies from the cities, the citizens and states, and how much they keep and not bring back to the communities. And they keep on seeming to rob us. And with the EVIP business, it's quite interesting now, all the hoops that we have to jump through, that the Governor's kind of taking control and advocating for incentives, new things, rather than paying down the debt that they really have to the contributors. So it's quite an interesting conference. So that's, I've attended many sessions, many eye openers, and it's, we need people like them to back us and have their ears to the ground.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Are there any additional reports and announcements? No? Okay. Well, you sent out a memorandum, I think it was a conjunction between your offices and the Treasurers Department regarding LDFA 2 on Friday, I believe. Mickey, Joe, you sent that out, excuse me?
Well, I, I sent it out.
Prepared by the, the Treasurers Office, excuse me. So you should have all received that. Additionally, I sent out an email, I believe later in the afternoon, in response to an email or a correspondence I received from Mr. Burgoyne regarding the LDFA 2 issue. And we requested that our legal counsel be present tonight to sort of walk us through this issue. So I'm gonna turn it over to, to Mr. Smith. And then, of course, if people have questions or concerns, we would be happy to entertain those. So, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I'm, Roger Swetts, my partner, has really been through this in excruciating detail. So I'm kind of his surrogate tonight. And the issue here is what to do with this, with the funds in the LDFA 2 account and whether to begin repaying the general fund. It's a problem that's complicated in part by the recent experience we've had with declining property values and also by the phase out of personal property tax. Especially since the effect of that phase out on TIF districts or TIF entities has yet to be determined. That is, there's no legislation to address it. Now, the Lieutenant Governor has pledged that TIF entities will be held harmless. It's uncertain at this point exactly what holding harmless is, is going to mean, and whether that addresses just pre-existing obligations and how those obligations will be determined, or whether they will be held harmless in terms of a restoration of the funding that they would have received but for the loss of personal property tax revenues. That discussion actually has just started to occur within a work group that the Lieutenant Governor has formed. I'm part of that work group. And although we've done a number of cleanup issues in, in personal property tax legislation and, and addressed those, and there are some proposed bills ready to go, the TIF issue has yet to be addressed and discussion just started last week. There, our recommendation, I think, is that because so much of the LDFA 2 revenue, about 57% of it is based on personal property tax, that it would be best if whatever you did, you held those funds at least until after the vote in August of 2014, when the personal property tax issue gets decided by the electorate. In particular, that's a referendum on the replacement mechanism to fund the personal property tax replacement with a set aside of use tax. And so it's our recommendation that whether you move that to the general fund or keep it in the LDFA fund, that it be held until such time as you know what's going to happen to those personal property tax revenues. I say that because the indication is that if the electorate fails to approve the personal property tax replacement, that there may be some move by the legislature to still repeal personal property tax without any replacement. That's what some of the legislative insiders are saying could be a real possibility. So I'm suggesting that you hold those funds in some portion, portion, some fund, keep them sequestered pending the conclusion of the vote in August 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there questions? Mr. Burgoyne?
The spreadsheet that we were provided assumes there is no replacement of personal property tax, the way I read it. Is that right?
Yes.
That's the worst case. Okay. So just, just to be sure.
Well, it's assuming there's no personal, there isn't a TIF.
In the TIF.
There is no legislation. I assume that.
Right.
Do you wanna maybe come to the podium in case there are additional?
I'm all for the thinking.
So, so without, without replacement of the personal property tax at all, in case it does not go through for the TIF. The LDFA 2 has available funds of FY13, 120, FY14, 120, FY15, 120, FY16, 75, FY17, 0, and then FY18, 100,000, and it recovers apparently after that because some of these debt obligations are ending, and that's the thing. So even if you didn't get replacement, you wouldn't have to send the money back. You just would never send it to the general fund in FY17. You wouldn't send as much in FY16 and so forth. The other thing I wondered about this, so I don't understand the recommendation to hold it, to send it back because it would never have to be sent back. So I just didn't understand that part of it. The bond reserves of $50,000, it seems to me that depending how the language is written, it would be better to keep our money in the general fund than to keep money over in the LDFA, especially calling it anything that would allow the Department of Treasury to subtract that amount from pre-existing obligations or however method it's going to do replacement. So it seems that if we take the money off the table, we might keep it in the general fund as 50,000, set aside for, you know, unfunded liability or something, just keep it in the general fund. But leaving it on the table in the LDFA 2 seems more dangerous to me because it would be available for them to review during that process to potentially helping us with the bonds. And if you had a bond amount stated there, they might deduct that. Well, one, one thing we're also trying to do is determine exactly what documentation exists to support this debt to the general fund, to see whether that qualifies as a pre-existing obligation in addition. And frankly, to see how it's documented in this city to get an idea of what kinds of commitments are out there by TIF entities, perhaps statewide, in, in addressing the legislation. You know, your thoughts, Councilmember, aren't bad thoughts. The question is, how do you implement that and protect yourself against perhaps an unlikely occurrence that something would happen to personal property tax and you wouldn't have full replacement or maybe no replacement at all?
Right. This spreadsheet shows zero replacement and shows the years in which you can have flows to the general fund and a couple of years in which you cannot, or they're reduced. So if there were any replacement at all, it would be betterment to this. So, so in FY16 or FY17, not getting the money back, that's, if you don't get replacement. If you get replacement, you, you would in those years be able to send money back to the general fund. But you would never have to send money back from the general fund to the LDFA. Just, I, the way it's carefully laid out here, the worst case. But on, on the bond part, my thought is that bond language could be unhelpful and hurtful to us. So from a safety point of view, why not just take the bond language out of the plan and not, the bond reserve language out of the plan, and not keep a reserve over there, send $50,000 to the general fund and call, call it, you know, designated for unfunded liabilities or whatever. And if you really needed to send it back, you could.
Well, I, again, I would hold it in, in a reserve fund for bond repayment of some sort.
Of whatever bonds.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Are there additional questions for our legal counsel regarding this issue?
Yeah, I have one more, if that's not for legal counsels, for Mickey.
All right. Well, let me, let me make sure there's, Mr. Burgoyne, let me make sure there's no additional questions for our legal counsel first. No additional, I'm sorry, Mr. Gearball?
Just clarify your recommendation. I know you're saying that we could keep the 50,000 or whatever in a separate fund identified as a liability that's potentially payable in general fund. Where would you prefer to see it?
Well, I think I defer to your finance staff in, in terms of where to see it. I'm just saying it, it should be segregated and designated for bond repayment.
So having it in the LDFA would not be a way of helping us identify that we have an outstanding obligation, that we are saving money for to pay, which would be then included as part of our numbers that we need to potentially use for the carve-out?
For the carve-out?
If whatever we need to present to the state to say, this is what we have for outstanding debts, and we're trying to make sure that what we have in terminology, namely the 1.6 million, is documented well enough to say, yep, that's one of those items you can include. I'm thinking having this actually being a part of the reserve in the LDFA helps reinforce that issue.
As I said, Councilmember, what we're trying to do is, is determine what kind of trail we have here indicating the obligations and whether that's gonna rise to a threshold to do that. I'm not sure, I think it's important to set the funds aside in some fund. I'm not sure it's going to matter from the perspective of the state in determining what's an eligible obligation or a pre-existing commitment. Anything we do after the end of last year, I'm not sure is gonna make a lot of difference in the way it's looked at by the state.
Okay.
Okay?
Do you have no other additional questions for, additional questions for legal counsel, Mr. Gearball? Okay. Do you have a question for legal counsel?
For the council.
Yep, please.
The, did you look at the 135,000 from, to EDC?
Roger's looking at that.
That pre-existing obligation. We have a similar document, similar to these documents, between the, between one TIF and another TIF. Well, EDC's not exactly a TIF, between a TIF and EDC, that they would supply 135,000 a year for a number of years through 2013. And many years ago, now after the 1994 changes, that was accepted as a pre-existing obligation. Just a two-page document signed by both parties and
Right.
Having been started to be performed for a couple of years, and then they said, well, it's, it's a document.
Right.
It's clear, it's signed by both parties, it's been performed for a couple of years.
Believe me, believe me, I went through with a number of communities, the implementation of Prop A and what that meant and what was an eligible obligation and what wasn't. And the discussions now are using the Prop A model as a starting point. Okay. So I'm, I'm not seeing that we've got a huge risk there. Don't get me wrong. I'm just saying that the legislation hasn't been prepared and we don't know what it is. And, and it's prudent to not take decisive kinds of actions until we're, we're more certain what the legislation's going to bring about.
If there are no further questions for our legal counsel, I know that, Mr. Burgoyne, you had a comment or question for Ms. Bennett?
Yes, yeah.
Please.
Well, first, I do like your spreadsheet approach, which looked as the worst case in which case the pre-existing obligations would not be covered. And there are years in here in which the flows to the general fund are not possible. But there are years in which the flows are possible, and those years in which the flows are possible do not have to be returned because there won't be that many obligations. You won't have as big, if there, if it's not replaced, you won't have as big a budget in the LDFA 2. It won't have as many revenues. But the debt demand, the debt load is less. So it's still not hurtful. You don't have to send money from anywhere else into the LDFA 2. It's basically covered. And I like the way she did that. And she did that not excessively. She kept a fund balance, and she did it to the point that, you know, works.
And by she, you mean Joanne?
Pardon me?
And by she, you mean Joanne.
Oh, well, whoever did it, did it nice. So, but I did have one question of something that was left out. The, the LDFA 2 has more than 50% personal property, but it also has real IFT of 6.6%. And so I emailed a question earlier. I just don't know if you got it, which is if you lose the personal property, we have agreements that that will go at Valrum. And if that goes at Valrum, that adds about 35,000 a year. And I didn't see the addition of the 35,000.
Explain what you mean, why we have agreements. If, at...
We have IFT agreements that say if the personal property is lost, the real property half rate will be bumped up to full rate. That's essentially what the agreement says. You familiar?
But I think, I believe, well, I'd ask Mr. Smith, I don't know that the, the PPT legislation allows to, to change IFTs, but...
At this time, I thought everything was locked into the IFT.
Well, the IFT agreement is an agreement between the city and the industry, that if the city, if there's legislation, that Alan Grossman, Attorney Grossman's writing, if there's legislation in which the personal property goes away, the half rate, real property bumps up to full rate. It's right in the agreement, as in every IFT agreement, between the city and the industry. Each agreement has that language in it.
I'd, I'd have to go back and look at the agreement, Councilmember. I, I don't recall that language in that way, but it, it may be there. I'm not saying it's not. I'm just saying that I, I don't recall specifically what it says and how that gets applied. But we, we can look at that and, and I'll...
The application method is supposed to be that it comes to...
I'll talk with the Treasurer about it before the next meeting.
Comes to the city council to act, to make it full.
Okay. So you can look into that in advance of our, and maybe get us an answer in advance of our, our next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Appreciate that. Mr. Gearball?
Just a comment. Monday, the LDFA, the boards are meeting, that we may want to have this review with them. And I don't know if we need to have Mr. Smith available or not, because really, the board is the advisory board that should be giving us the idea of what we want to proceed and go forward with. So I would like to make sure that they're clear on what this potentially means, so.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a good idea. Do you care to comment?
Sure. Actually, as, as Mr. Smith alluded, that, that while he's a, one of the best municipal attorneys around when it comes to municipal finance, Roger Swetts is one of the best around. So actually Roger is, we're planning, staff has already been working with Roger, and Roger will be here for that meeting.
Great. Thanks.
Mr. Burgoyne?
I got one more question. This is either for Mickey or the attorney. I, this, having some repayments on the general fund that show flows, a certain number of years, track record to the general fund. But in addition to that, there is about another five small amount, a smaller amount of obligation to major streets. Why isn't there like 10,000 a year coming back to major streets?
Well, we put this spreadsheet together, as you may know, as kind of a last, the amounts we're showing, yes, we have it here as general fund, but the approach is... amounts we're showing, yes, we have it here as general fund, but the approach is going to be that the percentage of debt allocation be that, like, it's 19 percent. 19 percent will go to major streets, and the rest will go to general fund. But that's something that we, it's, it's going to be on the same percentage allocation as the debt is. So there's a million six in general fund.
So we'll establish flows to both?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That's kind of our thought process, but we, for simplicity's sake, we just put it all in, in the one line for now, to determine exactly how we wanted to approach that. There may be a need or desire from the council to fund the lower amount to major streets sooner so that we can start, you know, replacement projects. We haven't really, we were still trying to figure out what we did with that money before we discussed how and when the payback came back. But this is the dollar amount that we anticipate we could project back to another fund. So that's not really clear.
No, no, it, it just says general, but it didn't say major streets.
Right.
So it seems to me if you didn't have that bond reserve, 50,000 bond reserve here, you could add 10,000 a year or so for major streets or whatever, you know, some amount.
Any other members of council have any additional questions or concerns? Okay. Well, then this dialogue and discussion will continue. We'll get you some information in advance of our next council meeting, and we'll also let you know what becomes of the discussion next Monday at the LDFA meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the final item in the discussion portion of the agenda this evening is an item that Mr. Burgoyne added, made his request to have an additional work session related to the budget. Mr. Burgoyne, do you want to articulate your recommendation, then we can see if there's consensus?
Well, there, we haven't received updated information on the budget, and we're going to act. For example, these LDFA flows are significant. We're going to act on this on the 20th at the 7:30 meeting. It'll be appropriate prior to that time to discuss how the budget can be balanced without hiking the taxes. And I have some, some thoughts on that, that as the property values go up, if you have increased taxes in the first year, the amount of tax increases to the taxpayer will go up by that much more, it'll be multiplied by that much more. So I think, plus, it, it will only take about one year to get beyond the 15 percent. And then you'll be looking at ways to have to get rid of the money if it goes over 20 percent. I think we should look at the budget figures again, look at an update of the budget figures, and not proceed without looking at it. And in fact, I took some time, and I printed something out that shows an example of how the budget can be balanced without hiking the taxes. And, and it is, it's a practice, we should use the best practice possible to balance the budget if possible and have a work meeting on this. So that's what I'm asking for, I'm asking for a work meeting, it's an important topic, and I don't think we should skip it.
Okay, Mr. Burgoyne is suggesting that we schedule sometime between now and our next council meeting, which is in two weeks, another meeting related to the budget. What is...
Actually, on the night of the meeting, just an hour before.
Okay. He's recommending specifically that we meet in advance of our next meeting, which would be on May the 20th at 6:30 to, to go over the budget again. What is the consensus and wish of council?
An updated budget, not, not the bu, not the same budget.
Excuse me, an updated budget. I need to hear from people on this.
I guess I would like to have an opportunity to, to read through these two pages before I make a comment about whether or not we need to meet again.
Mr. Gearbaugh?
We're going to be discussing that budget as part of the meeting, so I don't know why we just don't discuss it as part of the meeting and have it televised. Everyone wants to know what's going on, so I'd rather have it not be a work meeting that isn't viewed, I'd rather have it part of the actual council meeting if it's going to happen.
Mr. Roth?
I'd like to be sure it's on real figures rather than speculative figures, that it's the actual money that we have to work with and where things come from, so I can make sound judgments.
That's what I tried to do. I set four items of real, 100 percent certain figures, and then I put likely amounts down below. Likely amounts are tentative, but real, 100 percent certain through good budgeting practice would not leave 200 percent fund balance in one fund and 10 percent in, in another fund when they're linked. So that's, these four or five items are what I want to talk about.
Ms. Tahar?
I would like to have time to study the memo before deciding on extra meeting, but I, I agree with Mr. Gearbaugh that at this point, the discussion should be part of our regular meeting and televised.
Okay. I'm not exactly sure if that's a consensus, but before, before I try to develop one, let me just state my opinion, and let me preface by saying, Mr. Burgoyne, I appreciate your thoughtful analysis and the information that you've shared with, with council and staff, and I respect your opinion, but I fundamentally disagree. And I think that this council a week ago reached a consensus on how we were going to rectify our budget gap. That consensus or that solution is not based on academic theories, it's not based on conjecture, it's based on, on, on facts and figures. And facts can be, can be stubborn things. Now, we can have philosophical differences, and that's, that's fine, and we can, we can disagree on policy. That's, that's, that's expected as, from a legislative body. But I, I tend to concur with Mr. Gearbaugh that if you have some issues that you'd like to discuss specifically or concerns you'd like to raise, and if you want to vote against the, the budget and adjusting the, the millage rate, that, that, that's your right. But I don't see it necessary to have an additional meeting when there was an overwhelming consensus just a week ago on how to proceed.
That was without timely information. See, that, what has happened here is that the council has been asked to act before the information was received in a timely way. That's the biggest issue. And misunderstandings of the information, that's another issue. If you don't understand or you don't have the information, you're not going to get the same result. And the information, for this process, there was a push to make decisions before timely information and, and a debate as to what should or should not be included. What, what I see is huge fund balances squirreled off to the side and not applied, and yet a push without that information to make a tax hike. That, the timing isn't good, the full information isn't good. I think it's worthwhile to discuss it. If you want to discuss it during the main meeting, you could do that too, but it would be better to discuss it in a work session.
Yeah, yet again, you can disagree with the approach that has been recommended by a majority of council. That is fine, that is acceptable. I have to take issue with any suggestion that staff did not provide appropriate, timely or, or detailed information to, to city council. I think every time a council member had a question, a concern, wanted a, a particular piece of information, or wanted a scenario evaluated or analyzed, it was provided. So I, I, I don't, I don't accept that. Again, if, if you have philosophical differences with the, the approach that, that, that a majority would like to implement, that's fine. But I, I don't see us, I don't see council scheduling a work session that would bring to light anything new. I think it's just a bunch of issues that we've already debated and, and discussed, and there's not a lot of, of merit to, to doing that over again. So you are in favor of, of having another work meeting? That's acceptable. I am not. Mr. Gearbaugh?
I just want to comment again, and we can disagree, but a number of the items that are listed on here, again, are speculative. I mean, we can't even decide tonight about how to sell the property. You've got $900,000 on here of revenue coming in based on sales of land, and we haven't even decided who's going to represent us to sell it. So at this point, I...
That's not the 100 percent certain section. I only want to talk about the four items at the top.
Again, and that one, we just had a recommendation that we're not sure exactly how to handle our LDFA, LDFA until August of 14. I'm concerned about not replacing equipment that we know has to be repaired and we've put off for many years. It's just, at this point, I think I had information that I felt I was comfortable with. I've seen this stuff going back and forth. Yeah, can we go in it and, and try and make a lot of speculation or take money out of every fund that we have? We can do that, but we probably won't be able to build it back. Or we may have an issue of if we have something that we really want to go after or try and fix or repair, I'm, I'm not comfortable. I don't do that in my own personal financing, and I don't want to play that round with the city's financing. So I want to make sure that we're able to do some projects, and we haven't been able to do projects. If we build a little extra fund balance, we can repair our roads. We've got enough streets in this town to be redone if we need to use that money. At this point, I'm comfortable moving ahead with where we are. If we end up having extra money, then you know what? Maybe next year we won't set the millages high. But without all of these uncertainties, I just cannot continue to go forward and keep repeating and reviewing and redoing all of this. We'll talk about it at the next meeting when we are actually being televised and everyone can hear and understand where we're coming from. At this point, I agree with Mr. Morrow that I just want to move forward on the budget.
Okay. Mr. Roth, I do need a, a specific emphatic answer from you. Are you in favor of having an additional work meeting about the budget or not?
Not.
Okay. Mr. Rose?
Not also, based on the fact that in the 100 percent certain, more than half of those funds, we've just had a recommendation from the attorney, that those funds be sequestered. So they're not available to us anyway.
Why would they be sequestered? They don't have to be sent back.
We're not, we're not going to get into a debate to that, about that tonight, Mr. Burgoyne. Ms. Tahar?
No.
Okay. And there's a consensus not to have a special work meeting related to the budget. Mr. Burgoyne, you're welcome to bring these issues up and discuss them at the regular meeting on the 20th. If there are no further discussion items, moving on to the public comment period, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Any public comments? No? Okay. Is there any other business to come before Celine City Council this evening? All right, we have our next regular meeting on May the 20th at 7:30, and then we have our another, another regular meeting on June the 3rd. I do want to just articulate one last time, this is the last meeting that City Clerk will be, City Clerk Hill will be attending in an official capacity. We welcome you to attend whenever, and we thank you for your 41-plus years of extraordinary service to the city and wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I do seek a motion to adjourn at 10:14 PM.
So moved.
It's been moved, oh, excuse me, we do need to excuse the absence, or at least the partial absence of Mr. Peters. He had to excuse himself because he needs to be at Metro Airport at 4:30 tomorrow morning. So can I get a motion to excuse the absence of Mr. Peters?
Oh, moved.
Moved by Mr. Burgoyne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gearbaugh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have, and the motion carries. Now I need a motion to adjourn at 10:15 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gearbaugh, seconded by Ms. Tahar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. This meeting's adjourned.